One nation under God.
I'm gonna go around, who does the role? What were two of your sources?
Sir, agenda item of status is quorum. Do you have any quorum? Fourth agenda item is the approval of the agenda. Is there any change of sequence or removal of items?
Yeah. Um, Pam, where are we at? That's A, right?
A.
Ten A. We did not get the, our, our insurance person did not get the numbers back. Their projection to be, Pam, what was his comment?
Um, yeah, we had everything since March. The insurance people are just a little slow. They said that this is gonna be about staying as what it was last year, so that's why we're doing this.
But we didn't get the numbers back, same time that they came through.
Okay, so, um, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda, uh, to remove item ten A and approve the agenda.
Also move.
Is there a second?
I will say.
All in favor, six, five, I say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Wonderful. Okay. Um, agenda item number five is announcement.
I have no announcement.
Well, then we'll go to agenda item number six, which is celebration. And I hope we have a celebration.
We do. So Deb, um, I shared this with you, or Deb shared this with you last week. This is just a little document that we created with bios and pictures of the new folks hired in the district. This went out to staff the last week of school, um, with the anticipation, a lot of these folks are working in the district over the summer, so that folks can put a face to the name. Um, the anticipation is, in September, at the board meeting, we will be inviting, we wanna make this kind of a thing from now on, is we're gonna invite all new staff to the September board meeting and actually have these supervisors introduce them briefly to the board, have them in person, so the board can meet these persons in person. So, this was just a little opportunity to, for you to see some of the faces and reread the bios as of right now. You'll see in my update right now. We have two positions, um, actually three if you count childcare. We have a special, paraprofessional position and a high school math position. I think only they can choose that for right now.
And can I just ask, are both those divisions built into the budget we just approved?
Yes.
Okay. So, it's possible that that could, maybe because you have another solution for that math?
Could potentially lower, or, I mean, obviously, if we don't get the para position, that could, but that's what Pam was talking about. This is like throwing dirt, that, uh, maybe not in the dark, or the dark, but yes, that's accurate, that those were built in to those projections, but we just don't want that one. And Pam, with the math position, what did you build in for a projection on that?
At the time, because it was, at that time, there was, um, other staff taking on overload.
Yeah.
Was it built in the overload and built in the position? No.
Or just the overload?
Just the overload. So we are not hiring that position then.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
And all this, you know, and, you know, and this is why I find the annual meeting and all the bunch of stuff and all that really frustrating, because truly it is, it's creative writing. It's, it's a guesswork.
Yeah.
Until we know what our staffing's gonna be, until we know what, um, you know, what the money is gonna be coming from public sources, you know?
And that's the challenge to Marion's point is, is that, is issuing non-renewal notices, hypothetically speaking, with a budget that, like, is a whole idea behind our strategic plan of attracting and retaining staff, but just like, I know some districts, um, in this other part of the state that issue non-renewal notices to every single staff member every year. They set those out because what it does is it allows them to cover their bases, potentially if things change, um, but it, it is a bit of a, a challenge, but I, I think the advantage is, is we tend to budget very conservatively as far as what the revenues look like and those types of things, so that, um, that we do have some flexibility related to.
But those two roles, the para was built in, deal. And then the over, the overflow funding, overflow funding for the teachers, not the position. So at least that's what we approved today.
Correct.
Okay. Yep. Okay. Um, you're done with self, we're done celebrating?
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, um, for us to see the document, to share the staff. I know that we'll be bringing folks in in September to meet you.
Agenda item number seven is public comments, per schoolwork policy one eight seven. Is there anyone here for public comments? Seeing none, we'll go on to agenda number, agenda item number eight, consent agenda item. A is meeting notice certification, B, regular meeting and closed session minutes on May 12th, C, financial status, D, resignation, E, hiring, and that's it for the consent agenda. And I would like to make a suggestion that we pull item E1, hiring of the JV men's basketball coach, from the consent agenda for a separate motion. So the suggested motion would be to approve consent agenda items A, C, D, and E2.
Also move.
Is there a second?
I'll say the motion.
Are there any questions, comments, or discussions before we vote? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of C1, six, five, I say aye. Aye opposed, motion carried. Now I would entertain a motion to approve consent agenda item E1, um, JV basketball coach volunteer named Boden with name sustaining. Is there a second?
I'll say that.
It's been motion suggested to approve consent agenda item E1. All in favor, six, five, I say yes, or eight, eight, whatever, you know what, I'm trying to do things more than, aye! Say aye. Aye. Opposed, motion carried with one extension. Okay. We're on to agenda item nine, which is information only. Uh, item A is the district administrator update.
You are on the link, should have seen it on the computer. So I referenced this earlier, we have two, two remaining, uh, along with the childcare positions. The, um, paraprofessional position has been posted now for seven months?
Yeah.
It's been a while.
Well, no.
It's been, is it?
Yes.
Okay. Just like that. Um, and we at this point still do not have any applicants, is that accurate?
Right. I, I think we were after, but, items like that, I don't know, Jason agreed. Okay. What, is there a specific barrier? I mean, it's been a long time.
Yeah. Uh, Jason and I have been having several conversations regarding the bottom wage for paras in general, that we've had two applicants who very interested, and who would want to work here when the wage presented as an option. That was the, you know.
It's, it's a continuing struggle with, geographically with some local districts that.
Give us a drive.
Yeah. By the time you mix in drive time and then they, their salary is significantly higher, uh, it's just hard to lure folks to drive here. So we are pretty much restricted, hoping we get folks who maybe are in the, in the community. Um, so, yeah, the normal challenges of being a small rural district trying to attract folks that have to drive, especially if it's an hourly position.
Okay. Well, if there's anything that the boards can do to help with recruitment in that, please let Jason know, and Jason will let us know.
Thank you. So, next slide please. So, we, we talked about this last month, I just wanna circle back around. What we had talked about is the deadline at the end of July for the Ursa Business Partner recognition, and I know the board expects interest in potentially nominating, um, local businesses, local businesses. So, once again, plan would be that we would, um, come back for the July meeting with some businesses that we feel would be worthy of this recognition, and then we would have, at that point, I would submit the application after, with the board's direction after that point. So, if we can come to consensus, and you are allowed more than one nomination at one hour.
Got it.
So, okay. So I put the strategic plan in, in a spot that's not where it usually is located, because I wanted to kinda talk about, uh, later in the next item, our two items from now, you're gonna hear the directors and the building principals, and, uh, director of students is gonna give updates on their goals and then their proposed goals for next year. I am going to, tonight, give Kevin overview of a vision I have for, for our district's goals related to our strategic plan and how we're gonna get that to the community, uh, which will be on the next slide. So I wanted to just kinda talk about, Deb, are you able to zoom in at all? I'm not gonna read these words for words, but I just want to, if we can get into the point where my eyes just don't work with that font, you know? It's just too small for right now.
Oh, well here, do you wanna?
No.
No.
They won't work. I'm hoping she can zoom in. Is it not zooming?
No, well here, you can look at mine.
So I know these well enough that we can talk, as far as like, our, our areas that we focused on, student success. So, looking at, uh, as you'll hear from some of our building goals, are related to both academic and social emotional, uh, metrics as far as improvement by our students. So, uh, the, the vision would be, as you're gonna see on the next slide, I'm gonna give you an example of my vision of a dashboard, will be of like a real-time dashboard that's interactive for the community to be able to get kind of progress monitoring. Wellness, physical and mental wellness for staff, uh, as far as, you know, when you have folks who are healthy and feeling well physically and mentally, they come to work more often, we have lower sub-grads, um, they're the ones who are directly impacting our students. Uh, partnerships in community, that's a big piece for us in the Pittsfield School District, uh, and in many small communities, is we wanted to strengthen and expand, we already have some very robust partnerships, we wanna strengthen and expand on those partnerships. Finance and facilities, never more important than talking about the year after a referendum, right? That was approved by the taxpayers, is talking about, um, what are we doing to demonstrate that we are remaining fiscally responsible while still accomplishing these other goals, because obviously we're working under a budget. And then people and culture, which I would probably tell you might arguably be the most important thing in here, because without the people, um, you know, without our, our teachers and our, our, um, cooks and our custodians and our pares and all of those folks, we don't operate, right? And, and they're the ones that have that direct impact with students. So, uh, can you go to the next slide, please? So, my proposal is, is that we develop a strategic dashboard, and by we, I mean, and I'm working on it, and, uh, I'm gonna take you to an example. Now, there are companies that do this professionally, and they charge about $3,000 a year to maintain your dashboard, and that is not in our price range or budget or something I'm willing to spend. So I am trying to create, uh, a version that you go ahead and click on that link, it'll take us to an example. I just want you to kinda get a feel for what this would look like. So, what this does is, as you can see, the student success, which would correlate to our student performance, so this, this picks metrics that would be the way to measure academic success or student's social emotional health, and you're able to click on those. So like, if you go to view data, student proficiency, click that, this would take you to a chart that would show longitudinal data on student success and performance. So, honestly, the most complicated part, and this is where I have to rely on some of the younger administrators to help me with, is getting it to be the interactive piece where you can click on stuff and have it go there, like, I know how to get these charts and upload the data. So the, the idea would be, folks could look at, if anybody that wants to be going and look and say, well, how are they doing with student success, and see this longitudinal data indicating, here's what we're doing on those key metrics. Okay? Can you go back to the, so you can see, number of advanced learners, this would be tailored to what, like, our, you know, we, we talk about number of students that are in industry certificates and stuff, we're very proud of, right? So we would have a measure with that. Uh, so, I'm working on something that would be related to our strategic plan and kinda the things that we value here, that would be here, so, so this would be the student success. Can we go back, Deb?
Thank you.
Yeah, to that, I'm sorry, back, I don't have to back, yeah, click on the link again. I, I just wanna go to, I want, I want you to see, can you scan down? So here would be learning environment, that is not one of our specific, from our strategic plan, but these would be just, just for your rock right, right? If we have like, oh, what's our optimum student teacher ratio, so that's something we could promote out there. Uh, teacher retention, that's attracting and retaining staff, right? Is we would be able to share our teacher retention that would be outside of like retirement, uh, 'cause you'd wanna differentiate as that folks are retiring, that's got the goal is, they work here, they retire here. Teacher attendance, that was the interesting one, difficulty, is that's also good, that goes to that wellness and, um, healthy and emotionally well-being is when people are healthy and emotionally, because they come to work more often, right? Same thing with students, when they're healthy, physically and mentally, they come to school more often. Yeah, no? Finance and operations, so you'd have a link to your, you know, talking about your annual, you know, your budget documents and stuff, so this wouldn't be reinventing the wheel, but the thing I like about it is putting some longitudinal data in there for folks like that first chart to click at. Okay? Now, I think they have two more. So this was another interesting piece, is district characteristics, is once again, talking about, like, what we would come up with, like, what are, we're looking at, obviously, with the way revenue is set up at the state now is enrollment, is a big piece of the revenue puzzle, is looking at what does our open enrollment in look like right now? Is enrollment, is it declining, stable? Kinda talked about that. And then, uh, you know, our, uh, I think I talked to you before about our, we have, we have forty, about forty-four percent of our students are low socioeconomic status in the Pittsfield School District. So, that is, that's a fact, right? Um, we do a lot of things as a district to try to overcome that barrier to academic success, which is a lot of research, that if you come from a household that's in that poverty range, you're a little bit behind the eight ball. I mean, you can succeed, but it's just acknowledging there's some challenges there with that. But, I'm not saying like this characteristics one would be one we use, but this was just to give you a view. So this is one of those ones where it's $3,000. So this is a professionally non-hung, uh, I'm not saying mine is gonna be a T move version, but, uh, this might be set to borrow a little bit high, so please don't hold me to those standards, but you get the general idea, it's an interactive dashboard where community members, board members, staff can go in and see, like, where are we at with those things. Uh, something we did, so, okay, Deb, we can go back to one, two there. So, my plan is to have this functional by the start of the school year in September, that's, this is gonna be my summer project, is to have this maybe ready to rock and roll in September. And then I would like to do snapshot shots, and I see I cut off there. What I was looking at is what would be appropriate for snapshot. December is, would be after the October, uh, October is when, uh, excuse me, November is when, uh, the state report cards are released and unembargoed. So the idea would be, we would have real-time student data of report cards course to present in December. Uh, and then, again, in the spring to do like updates, uh, where, this would be up at all times, but to do updates for the board at a board meeting and for the public at the board meetings. So that's kinda my vision. Uh, a piece of this puzzle, we're talking about, like, how do you measure staff satisfaction, community satisfaction? When we did a survey, um, we sent out about three weeks ago, to all families, to all staff, and to all stu, the students from fourth grade through twelfth grade. Um, and we asked them, they're each individual surveys, so, so they were specific to those stakeholder groups. And we have that data, and we actually, the admin team discussed it, leadership team last week, we went over the data and discussed it. We're compiling that into charts, and the plan is to share that out with those stakeholder groups. And then what my plan is, as I thought through this about doing my, kinda the state of the district presentation, is during my district administrator update next month, I'm going to tie, tie everything together that you're gonna hear tonight, and kinda have that data disseminated by that point from those surveys, and I will then represent it to the board, um, during my district administrator update, where I will kinda tie everything together next month, including the survey data, to share the, uh, staff, student, and community survey data, uh, with the board and the public at that point. So, that's my proposal, is to create this strategic dashboard to have increased transparency, kinda how are we doing? Do we have our strategic plan? We talked about it. Um, you know how we have the board goals? There's many districts that don't have that, do that. This takes it to another step to being transparent with, okay, so we're doing this, well, what progress are we seeing, and what progress are we making? At that point, so what I will do is, I will lay out in each of those areas, I will give some examples of things that we're doing in each of those areas, and then give some data related to the survey about how we feel we're measuring our success in each of those areas at this point right now. Any questions from the board or comments related to the thoughts on the strategic dashboard?
I think it's exciting. We need to be able to report back to the taxpayer. Wasn't good move? Okay. Well, come in.
No, I like it. It, it really tells a lot of information, not only just for those in the district, but anybody who wants to come into the district.
Yep.
And have fun with it.
I actually enjoy the collecting data and looking at it in deep dive, and it's just the part where it's making all of it work, where you think, okay, you put on this, it's gonna go, and that's why I rely on the youngsters to.
And designing.
Yeah, it may not look nice.
Right.
Yep. But, uh, no, I am, I'm excited about being able to roll this out, and I think it'll be something that folks will be able to, we'll be able to direct people to, um, where to find it, and we'll get a banner on the main page where folks go and click. I, I think it puts more teeth and meaning to the strategic plan. It's got a little device.
Once you have that system bound, that.
It's there, just up on the, yep. So that's, that's where I'm struggling a little bit right now.
That's it.
Okay.
Okay.
And then, I think that's it for me, yep.
Okay. Uh, let's go on to item B, um, school board goals update. Um, again, our goal for this school year was number one, to educate the public on the referendum. Number two, explore strategies for supplemental revenue development. Um, did that, I believe that subcommittee, yes?
That's accurate.
And does the, the subcommittee members have a brief report?
One of the board members want to go, an update from that.
I was, I'm on that subcommittee, but was not even to attend, so I, I missed it. Which one you were referring to?
It was the one.
Supplemental funding?
It was our supplemental funding meeting last, last week. Was it last week?
This is briefly, we, I think we decided, I don't remember, if they go next, that's order, it's unsure.
Okay.
We, we wanted to bring in, um, Kelly Hager. Am I saying that name correct? Kaylee?
Kaylee?
Who was it going from?
Kaylee Gallo?
I'm sorry, Kaylee, we got too many people.
Okay. Why bring Kaylee back?
Yes. So, so the idea was that, uh, I think there was the discussion about what we came to consensus on, and we felt the board did, is, is this something where we wanna look at specific projects, or this wants to be something where we wanna build this fund up, and it was determined that the consensus was to build it? This would be a fund for sustainability, not like to raise money for certain projects specifically.
Okay.
And that we would like to move forward with getting some legal advice on the structure and, um, bringing in the folks, and I know Julie had indicated that, um, Julie, the fund you have worked with, we see.
Yeah, Dave comes.
Yep, and we have, Dave was with that principal, so.
Okay. Okay. Along with that, a number of months ago, we talked about having the building principals work on a structure for those small funding requests, and my understanding is you're gonna be ready to report on that at the July meeting. Okay. That'll be great. Thank you. Thank you. Um, third goal, to develop and strengthen community partnerships as well as communicating the accomplishments. I think that's ongoing. Social media is kicking us, and, quite frankly, both the local newspapers. Um, so I think we just keep, keep an eye on that one. Um, always looking to get better though, in all of those categories. Uh, number four, uh, goal was to analyze the childcare availability and financial sustainability of the Pittsfield Childcare Centers. Is there any report from that group having mapped in our last board meeting?
Yes. It's hard, it's hard to get, honestly, so I'm silly with all these committees. Trying to remember when we have not met. Oh, we invited, yeah, we invited her after the last board meeting. Uh, she was at the last board meeting when we discussed the, um, the process.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so obviously tonight during the presentation, I think we'll be able to, board will have an opportunity to ask some questions and get some clarification on where we're at with some of that progress. Appreciate you.
Um, you know, along with, um, Jason, you're doing a standard district, there may be advantages to have a board, we do a few sentences on each of these goals, to report back.
Yeah.
And then we can start thinking about goals for next year.
I think that's a good idea.
Okay. Sounds great. Sounds great. Um, next is, um, administrative staff, school year summary and goal. And, we, um, would like to start with Dan, has he been here?
Dan, Dan submitted, Dan is on vacation this weekend, on vacation, he submitted. Deb, can you pull up Dan?
Yeah. Yeah, I read it.
Yeah. I had, Dan did say he would be available for any questions from board members, I don't know if there was anything specifically about Dan's report. As far as questions or comments.
Well, you know, I can. Does anyone have questions?
I just have one form. I, I would like to know, well, it's not a question, but I'd like him to tell me what the watering schedule on the football field is. I wanna make sure that it's getting what it needs to this year, because in past years it's happened.
Yeah, and I think that was the whole premise behind getting the system, but yes, Julie noted.
I just have one question, not really about what we presented, but just if it was possible for him to look forward to the next school year, and like, what are the projects, or, like, this is a great summary of what Chad happened, but there isn't any like, you know, what's next year's goal?
Yeah.
So just to, like, especially if it involves capital or anything, like, just to let it know, like, what's on his docket for next year, so that we know.
Yeah, we'll do. I will indicate there were no weak spots, there were no major, there are no major capital improvement projects on the docket for next year, that Julie noted as far as, um, some of the short-term goals.
Yeah.
And he did say he would be with, come to the next one's meeting.
Oh, that's perfect. Or he just wants statements provided, that's fine. Such as helpful for us to like, know if there's something he wants us to be thinking about in the board.
Yep, fair enough.
Thank you. Well, I, I have a question on that same thing. Um, I bet there's no capital project scheduled for next year, but we did have a facility, a community-based facility committee meeting, that, uh, that last fall, I believe it was, or the evening, yeah. Um, you know, with the green light, yellow light, red light?
Yeah, we went over the capital, uh, improvement plan.
Yeah.
Yep.
And there were a bunch of red lights on there.
Um, yeah, I, when I say red lights, and I mean, Pam, you can jump into red lights, like, there were, the air units, the, at the high school were end of life, and then there were some entrances, like door security type stuff, that, those things were actually addressed last year immediately.
It was.
Yep, some of the door entrances that were not secured, uh, were addressed immediately on that. Um, and, uh, I, I will tell you, to be completely candid with you, that committee law, we met three times last year.
Right.
Um, with the referendum process this past year and everything else, when it lost almost steam, because we only have so much bandwidth right now, and it was kinda like, um, it just kinda, not that it was forgotten, it just kinda fell by the wayside a little bit. We wanted to make sure, are there any things on there that are gonna be like, we do not wanna have this fall down around this, and I think some of those red light things, I don't think they were necessarily saying that stuff was, I think it was related to the age.
It was just the age.
The big age.
And like, failing or just past is, like, recommended use of one.
Yeah, recommended use of one, so that, that was the biggest thing that would be air, the, the units on the high school.
That were, that were completed.
That weren't completed.
Well, you know, kinda following up on, on Julie's thought about her request regarding what's coming up this next year, I, I think it might be helpful for us to have a better sense of what is nearing end of life.
Sure.
Because if it's not next year, you know, when you get to the end of life, things can fall apart pretty quick.
There's always something.
There's always something.
We, the reality is we have aging buildings, and I think we know that, we have aging buildings, and I, I will, Dan and I will work to come up with a list, because obviously if we were to present on everything that's coming to end of life, we would be here for because obviously if we were to present on everything that's coming to end of life, we would be here for three hours because we have aging buildings. Um, so there's, I guess there's the reality of what we can do and then there's the idea of, uh, but yes, we should pick some things that we probably anticipate. Where we need to start monitoring more closely. We do, we do keep an eye on some of these things that we know are, uh, I know Matt's gonna present on some kitchen equipment, some, some big ticket items that are nearing end of life.
I just wanna add to this, um, it, I see that we're down to two staff members. I'm just curious on how, how awesome those two staff members being compensated and how we're doing. We had seen it appear that everything is being kept up or others having to work overtime?
Yeah.
Or is that how this is?
Yeah. It's spread out, like Dan Merritt, um, has been working and it's not sustainable. Like we, we need to get those positions filled and we've had people in those positions that it hasn't worked out for various reasons.
So it's like forced overtime or is it?
No, I mean, we, Dan, Dan is doing what needs to be done and he's being compensated for it, so. And I guess, I guess the question would be this, when you say forced overtime, um.
Yeah, I know.
You can strongly, like, we need to get stuff done and I would say this, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Merritt, he's a guy who's go-getter and kinda got it, like, I need to get stuff done. But it's not sustainable, Chris, like, this is how you wear people out, but not.
Right.
It's like.
Warrantable.
Yeah, and we are, we're just, we're looking at options, including the last, I don't know, Pam, was it two months ago? We had the floor polisher demo, um, come, the people come in, they gave a demo on an automatic floor polisher that would clean the hallways and the floors automatically, like you match your buildings out and if you don't like.
Like a roomba. It's a charo.
I don't know, is that like a vacuum?
Those robots.
I have four kids, my kids are my robots. So they, they get, it's a higher, like a cost upfront on it, it might've been like sixty thousand dollars. But the idea would be, what it does is it allows your existing staff to do other things while this is cleaning your hallways and stuff like that. So when we're looking at like, what options do we have? Because we're trying to recruit folks, like we're advertising, we're trying to get people in. If that's not working, we can't just keep saying, ah, it's not working, is what other methods are there to maybe save some? So, Tim, we talked about, I think I mentioned a couple of weeks ago, the administrators, we talked about having staff help in students empty, put the trash in the trash bins and then having students go around with the trash cradle and dumping it at the end of the day, all that takes time. Uh, many hands make for light work, as Graham used to say, right? So, so we're looking at those options, but absolutely hit the nail on the head, it's not sustainable. Um, so we're still trying, but we need to get, like ideally one more person in. Uh, right now I'm being realistic when I say that, is to get another person in, take the load off.
Our summer crew's doing great job.
Yeah.
Students.
Yep.
Are we fully staffed with our summer crew?
With our summer.
By?
Yeah.
By, with the two.
Yep.
And the two provisions that we're recruiting were built in budget.
Yes. I'm sensing a theme here. Yes, yes. Yes, they were, so. We're, we're trying, yes.
Okay, um, if there's nothing, any other comments on building and grounds? Then let's go on to the, um, director of food service. The guy with the cool pants.
Oh, yeah. All right. Well, to start with the summer meal program, cause we're right in the middle of it. Um, right now we are five days into, we had last week, Monday, Thursday, and then today. So as of the end of the day today, we've served one thousand three hundred twenty-four breakfast meals. And for lunches, we've served one thousand four hundred forty-two. Now, what's that compared to the last year or last couple of years? We're actually over last year by about a hundred in both parts and over year four. But it's hard to say because the last week's summer school was always when it kinda starts to, you know, plateau and dip. We were all black and blue, it kinda dipped down the last week, so. But honestly, I'm starting to see a little more people coming out the streets compared to last year too, so that's helping. Um.
What do you mean by that?
It wasn't, it's not compared to, it's not tied to schools, so I'm going forward. So what that means, anybody that's eighteen years younger, they don't have to be in summer school. They could just be, I'm hungry for lunch, and I'm eighteen or younger. Come in, clean lumber, install thirty, they check in the office for safety reasons, come on down.
And how, how many do we have doing that?
Um, that's hard to tell, I mean, full meals is one thousand four hundred forty-two lunches, for example. I'd say about ninety-seven of our kids that are in summer schools, they got help from school. What we're seeing is like mom, dad, grandma, grandpa comes to help. They're bringing their little brother, their little sister, their cousin, whoever it may be, and then they're eating lunches and doing them. Because even a lot in summer school, they're under the eighteen mark, so they can have a meal free since.
Man, how do you call, how does the school district qualify for that?
That's a good question, but I'll bring that up because it's called a summer meal program. We are literally in the fifth year of it. Sixth year, if you count the year code, but that was a different program, they don't count it. If we do nothing else, nothing else change, next year, the last year, we qualify. To qualify for, you have to have fifty percent or more free-reduced students or have to have in area, into like a map of the area, property value, the whole formula of it. That's how we qualify before. Right now, we're, we're one point one two percent too low in free-reduced to qualify after next year. We have one more year of those, we need to improve, you need to improve for five years. So we do have one more year that's what we're, what we cover for that now, hopefully in two years we'll be back up. Speaking of that, the free-reduced numbers, we took a little dip with Mike and Ellen on this. Everybody see the news with, uh, Medicaid going on and cuts and all that kinda stuff. Medicaid's big qualify for direct transportation free lunch. So if you see students or children, they're, they're coming off of that, that will probably differ our free-reduced numbers a little bit. Hard to say, won't know until it's all, it doesn't happen, I mean, hopefully it doesn't, but Matt.
I mean, at least the category that, that highest risk won't be kids.
Yeah, and they just don't fill out their free-reduced form, hopefully they'll qualify.
Probably go on that call.
Yeah, they'll qualify as income or maybe they are on SNAP or another program that does qualify for them.
So is it a direct recording of our costs and we get that reimbursement?
For, for Medicaid.
For the summer meal program.
Meal? We, well, we have to file a claim for it, so we get the regular, whatever the reimbursement is. I don't even remember off the top of my head what the reimbursement is. We just file a document that says this many breakfasts, this many lunches, what's up, served, and then we get.
Yeah, cause it's easy, we have a call to split for breakfast, lunch, breakfast, lunch, or snack. We can be joining two other three, we do breakfast, lunch, one, we get one thing to take it and you'll feel a better reimbursement rate for breakfast compared to snack program.
And so the summer program, I believe it, does the coverage cost?
Yes. Okay. So it is pretty much a direct.
It's a wash.
Yeah.
Yeah. You don't make money, but, uh, it covers what's all sudden done.
For clarification, if, if maybe this has changed, a school can qualify. So, so for instance, in, in my former district, one of the schools qualified. And you're able to then serve the meal out of that school for all of.
That's why we are certified by the program, but when they re-accept the property value, they'll sort of that.
Okay. And the elementary, uh, elementary could qualify, so the high school, and then we could feed you just.
Exactly.
Get out of the building.
And others, when I talk to a person or a D P I, they'll, they look at it, they're not where to volunteer originally because like there's rapid, smart children to qualify and they're, I know it's kinda sad to say, they, they can go there, they're not going to more like with their, but definitely look at it. Um, I don't see them re-issuing all our property values again with the next year, so the most realistic possible is to get out that, cause you start more free-reduced.
Yeah.
Yes.
But all our property values just went up, so I have not.
That's what happened. That's what brought it back down and.
It's ridiculous.
Yeah.
I know.
Um, so that's from our, we, summer meal program, that's going well right now, it's Monday, Thursday, got to sell the twenty-sixth, like, the last Thursday this month. If anybody knows anybody eighteen younger that hasn't come in, Monday, Thursday, come one round. Uh, so now we've got some numbers here for the school year we just finished, um, for our elementary building. So when I say elementary building, I'm talking about all the grades on the list except for childcare. We served a total of thirty-one thousand eighty-four breakfast meals, which compared to school year before that is down just two thousand six hundred seventy-three meals. But when you go to the lunches, we served forty-five thousand twenty-two meals compared to forty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-nine. So we actually served one thousand two hundred twenty-four more lunches at the elementary building, this school year is bad, that's currently following year. Now, we talk high school, the breakfast counts went up, which was a big help, we did two breakfasts. Times, if, if their stomachs are not hungry, they're just rushing it in. So we still have that one, we had the one at nine and a half o'clock. That really helped because if you look at their breakfast, we served two, oh, I don't remember. We served nine thousand eight hundred sixty-eight breakfasts at the high school last year compared to eight thousand three hundred ninety-two. Despite we feel that second chance breakfast, I don't know, we increased by one thousand four hundred seventy-six breakfasts at the high school. Which is great, it moved down, continue to keep going off and off, you know, kids are gonna use it now to have that time.
Just out of curiosity, if the student takes that early mark.
It's one, it's just they get one choice.
But I guess you can't come back.
No, what we did is a lot of it is we're hungry right at seven-thirty or, you know, I, cause they rush in the door with their, I guess it's called coffee, it's cream and sugar in a cup. And that way they get hungry by nine o'clock, they come down, get their milk, bread and juice or whatever it is that kind of. Now, at the high school for lunches, almost a wash. We served two thousand eighty-seven lunches compared to two thousand three hundred thirty-two, so a two hundred forty-five meal difference, which is a positive total reward offense. You break out all the whole school year, next year, meal super day, which is so good. Uh, I think we'll be increased next year in that, cause their junior class is a little bigger. And they seem like to stay in the building, like our seniors last year, like believe, in a boy, they just wanted to get out of the building very long. Seen the juniors, which now is going to be seniors, seen that they're taking home a little more. So that's not a positive. Um, now, childcare meals, this last year, we did a hundred, no, sorry, one thousand eight hundred nineteen breakfasts, which is two hundred fifty-four less than the year before, which is, it's hard to say because, yeah, we lost some of the older grades, there are four Ks, they gain on the four K class, but basically a wash. Lunches all, at the point of two hundred forty-five meal difference, we did two thousand, two thousand eighty-seven, but some of those aren't four K now, so it's roughly the same. If you look at average in the school year, we serve in the district two hundred thirty-nine breakfast meals today and three hundred and nine lunches today. So every day, three hundred and fifty-nine kids are getting a hot lunch meal that, that fifty percent of them, forty percent of them may not have gotten otherwise, because it's worth.
Matt, could you please repeat the number that you shared for the high school for lunch?
For lunches last year?
Yeah.
We served fifteen thousand four hundred thirteen meals.
Okay, thank you.
And then I'm gonna talk about some equipment coming forward here. The two biggest things are our dishwasher at the high school, that's, Nike, they put in this wave, right? And it's not as simple as just buy a new machine and replace it because all the codes that Jay Dan and John know better about this. We had to be replacing wiring, the plumbing, we had to vent out of the building, stuff that wasn't old thirty-five years ago when they put this one in. Um, so a twenty thousand dollar machine, that ended up being eighty to a hundred thousand dollars, all of a sudden done, it's all gonna work after it. And then our offices, especially our elementary building, we have had an average of at least four or five all the year, ten people in on them. So we're keeping them patched up, we're keeping them running, but they are on their last cycle of life, is a good way of saying it. So that's something that's gonna, in the future, I have to look at, obviously, basically.
When, when these incidents happen, obviously there's a log somewhere, right? Like, there's a log of these incidents.
Repairers.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, between me and Daniel, yeah, and then.
And that's something that could be, you would.
And that, that, Chris, is going into strategic, uh, excuse me, the, uh, capital group, as far as you look at those logs, if you get some point like that, we didn't, we couldn't get parts anymore.
Yeah.
And then also if you're making, if you're spending like ten percent of the cost every year.
Yeah. You're putting, you know, nine hundred dollars on this one, and then every hundred, a month later, at some point it adds up to base, it costs as well, but now, when it's done. And then here's, kind of, I mean, everybody knows this, but food costs, I mean, everybody's seen food in the grocery stores or wherever you purchase your food, uh, insanely high, it's, it's, it keeps getting higher. Um, so I just look at some items that are popular items that students enjoy, that we do use a lot. Um, for example, our fresh strawberries, through the stock strawberries, I don't know, I, I have kids that come through every day. They would eat strawberries every day, come on, chat for them, I mean, if they went away, I think he was very down to your, to be honest with you. Um, they throw in eight tone cases or flat. Last year at this time, oh, I'm not gonna mess that up, fucking last Monday, there's no reprices or Monday. That one case was twenty-five dollars and ten cents. Um, it was fifteen eighty-four, so you've seen an increase of sixty-three percent, so one five strawberry in one year. Uh, first of all, that's another big thing, we serve fresh, we run our cooling, we all live in a thing with them. Last year at this time, the case was twenty-four dollars and twenty-three cents. This last Monday, it was same case, forty-three dollars and forty-four cents. That's a fifty-six cent increase. And for example, in the organ, we use four or five baked foods. Strawberries, we'll use seven to ten a week, depending on the week, how many kids are around here, you know, what you're eating. So those, the one right there, you're bringing up forty to fifty cent, and we just got a memo yesterday, it should be hitting the general public in the state, so. This fall, what is it, August, beef prices are gonna go up ten cents, chickens four to five, porks five to seven cents. Now, I mean, somebody, I mean, go with ties others, but it's all tied together with everything from our beef patties that are doing a hot dog, they're gonna go price, you know, just simple things that are gonna go up. Favorites program, they have this fresh fruit and vegetable order system that comes from Department of Defense. We've heard that, we've been hard by it anyway, I gotta find out. We get a certain amount of dollars from the government to buy fresh fruits and vegetables from just one little company, ours are based October. Uh, so two years ago, the twenty-three, twenty-four school year, we were giving twenty-four thousand four hundred seventy-four dollars. Twenty-four, twenty-five school year has gotten fifteen thousand forty-one. Next year, we're only getting ten dollars eight hundred thirty-eight. So as you see, we've lost almost ten dollars a month, year after year, for these things, while the prices going up. So that is one of our shortfalls coming through. Um, staffing, we're good staffing wise, everybody's going back. We have two subs, help subs. Some of the teachers kinda, kinda built up on school year and started that, so people are thinking about food service again, that some really kind of out of sight, out of mind. So here, we have our continued education credit unit, so we learn more. August twenty-first, it's held the guts this year. Hopefully then too, we'll have a little more direct information, exactly how much higher prices and stuff are going. Right now, it is a gap where it could be five cents, it could be fifty cent higher, I mean, over the last three years, I think it's only food costs change every day, so. And, and, yes, that's covered in, any questions or?
Matt, can you, can you talk for a moment, you know, Pam, you and Pam and I met last week to discuss, obviously, you know, the deficit and then looking ahead at these food cost increases. Um, can you talk a little bit about the challenge of, is, is if we lower the quality, it becomes a point where the challenge is you lower the quality too much.
You're not coming out ahead. Or they're doing a sample, like a hamburger one, for example. We've worked with last year, we've been working with students asking what they like, it's like, we've talked about our quality one, they enjoy it now. We can go backwards, the one that's a little smaller, it's more overhanded, try, I mean, it's like made difference, the kids really don't, no one likes it, it's wouldn't drive hard, you can picture that. So the kids aren't trying to be eating a fry, one, not gonna take a meal, if they do, they're probably going to go by, they just don't wanna eat it. So we're being tolerant, food is there, I mean, they take food, they're eating it, but it's not helping them with the nutrition. And then again, they really not saving that much for you, cause you're, you're saving pennies when you need to pay dollars type thing. So if you're going to pay them three cents on hamburger one, you're not gonna spend that much for that setup compared to kids not taking the meals, so. Um, same thing with like fresh foods, we built up our fresh fruits and vegetables, where it's really, a lot of the system is only fresh fruits and vegetables, they do get badly, it, it is, it's that they do. You can go to more canned, frozen fruits, vegetables, but the price likely isn't that much of a difference for the quality to upset consumers? Does that make sense?
And talk about the local, you know, obviously for, for, sometimes by local, and when you buy local, sometimes you're gonna pay a little bit more, but that money stays in the.
And it uses it too, it's getting harder to, with us, local, there is, there may have trees and all, too. When you get followed, it's not broken down, you're putting a lot more labor into it, so your cost, even if it's a dollar less for that case or something, when you're just putting an extra thirty dollars in labor to process it, we need to be, so your cost is up now.
One final thing we talked about proportion, you know. One final thing we talked about proportion, you know, kids waste food. Uh, in my own house, my kids waste food, right, it's like, seriously, that's a whole other meal that's going in the garbage. Um, is talking about when we serve, you know, and that's the whole man and woman power versus, like, when we put the portions on, you'll get kids that'll come up, if the kids are serving themselves in high school, they'll throw like two scoops of something on there, and then one of the scoops goes in the.
You know, we mentioned, for example, we, everything, exactly, four cup and a half cup serving for fruit, and that's a great example. Now, for high school, that is what they have to offer, free force cup serving, you know. So what we do is, if we put a cup, they're not eating it, they get thrown it, so we put an, and a little label behind it. So you have that one screw label, it doesn't equal all, because one student will take a cup or, next student is taking the minimum. Then again, you could have somebody literally just put it on there, doesn't need our staff member or two doing that, so are you saving money? You know?
Matt, is there any, I mean, monitor what's being thrown away, like, I mean, if, if someone was, I don't wanna, you know, say if somebody got to be designated to watch them, but, always, I hear you, you must be.
I see, because eminent.
Foods that are almost a waste of, you know, why are we even making this?
It's not so much of a, it's just more of a, once things go through of your younger grades, your younger students. What they're doing is, it's not they don't like it, it's just because they had to have a minimum half cup of this, minimum one to resist it. Well, five-year-olds, they eat three bites out of something, they're not eating the whole thing, but you can't just serve them that half. Eat the sandwich, because then it's not a, it's a fireman, yeah. High school, I've looked at one where they did, you have your few students, the same ones that, they almost just throw it away just because they, someone made that, so they have to have fruit or vegetable. So then they think that they throw away, eventually they're gonna tell them how to take it, then their meal is a reversal, so don't tell them to take it. That make sense?
So you they have to, they have to have.
They have to have, every student has to have, under grade eight, half cup, grade nine, three force cup, a fruit and or vegetable. And that's one component, then they gotta have two more components, so that could be a milk, that could be, the, uh, the hamburger one, the hamburgers, uh, two components right there, plus their fruit or vegetable, they're, they're, they're minimum.
So you can ask them, what would you like?
We do, we've got it down, we've got it down, yeah, there's different choices, so we rotate them all.
There's certain things that you tell you must have.
We pretty much, we did a lot of that, to be honest, over the last year, talking to students, seeing what they do like and don't like. What a new item comes in, we'll go do, we'll have like, candy, chocolate, with, I don't, I never talked to me, I told them, they just taste, like a small mall. They like it, okay, we'll put on full time menu, they don't like it, well, no harm, no foul. So we're all.
I'm just saying, when there's somebody standing in line.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, and they're, you're having their tray.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that tray's already made up, you're, you're saying.
No.
You're not asking them.
No, all of them leave it up, so soon comes to, grab your, if they want milk, they grab their milk, grab their tray, then they have their, first out, the fruit or vegetable, always first. So that way, they get that cooler done the other way. They take their half cup for a three-fourth of high school, a fruit and or vegetable, any combination of that. And then we go online, the next thing, that could be, let's say, it's, they're having cheeseburgers and french fries on today, so then we have our french fries service. They don't want it, they don't have to take it. If it's a cheeseburger, they want it, they can take it, they don't have, they don't have to take that either. Um, I tell you, maybe if they want it, they can take it, or they don't, you don't have to take it. Uh, as long as, when they get to the very end, where they check all the point of sale, they have minimum items, those three components, one of them being a fruit or vegetable, so.
That counts.
Yeah.
Then it counts for reverse, and Matt, do the care tables, which I think is relevant to like wasted food, bull buildings, but there's limitations on prepacks, like if kids.
Yeah, it's kind of out of control, Sam, because kids are taking stuff, just put on a do, and you have excesses, yeah, because, if they already have their minimum items, go take that fourth item, let's say, for example, take the yogurt, and they're not, they have no intention to eat it. But I can't tell them, no, you can't take, because they didn't get offered, and they don't even eat it, it just puts out there, goes to, so ideally, another student will take and eat it, but, if you have four items off there, are there gonna be four students that are all one hundred dollars, you know, more likely not.
And we can't do that.
I don't expect this to happen tonight, but as we are thinking about if there's any changes in pricing for the next school year, it would be great to know what is the price of a breakfast, what is the price of a lunch for both grade school and high school, and then what is our reimbursement for free and reduced? So in a sense, what is that makeup dollar that we need to find somewhere else, because we're not charging for it, and, even that's an area, again, if we're raising funds or looking at different things, that could be an offset. And then what is the actual cost for a fully priced meal that we're considering in regards to that charge? So it would just be good to know that.
It's almost, you don't really have an exact, it's almost, it's one thing might take all the items, one or two might take the minimum items, and like, eat it, the milk and the fruit, and the, so it's going to cost, and at the end of the day, it's not gonna be, you're gonna be invested per meal. A milk, for example, is costing enough thirty-nine cents for that milk, so if they take the milk, there's forty cents right there on that meal, we're getting two dollars back. And then they take a fruit that's serving size is another eighty cents, now you're at a dollar twenty. So with eighty cents, we're like, this other burger, a bun, fries, baked beans, I guess.
And my understanding is, Matt, we have not increased the breakfast cost in ten years, is that accurate?
No, it's not, it's been here, it's been here, it's been dollars. Free and reduced is free. Yeah, I do think it would be helpful to know when we address that, what's the real, I mean, and I understand, you're gonna have to choose some averaging, but what is the cost of a meal? And what are we getting reimbursed on free and reduced, and you know that that's just the deficit we have to make up, because that, but then what is the cost for a, for a meal, and it's not a dollar, and so we need to really address that.
No, there is a maximum.
Yeah, it's a legal, it's a legal, it's a max.
So no matter what, that's the most you can increase in a, to go.
For a fully funded meal?
Yeah, yeah, in that, in that.
Every other, if you spend the fund balance down, and the most you can increase is that, yeah.
The most you can increase, they put a, they put a cent on it, even though costs are going up fifty percent, yeah, what, ten cents? Yeah, so those are, okay.
Yeah.
And then whatever they serve is a reimbursement rate for the free meal or, 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 we don't really go over a certain percentage of formula for the paid meal, so, even with the meal cost of six dollars of produce, if the government can, we can only get four dollars reimbursement, that's the most we can go with.
Is that a federal or a state rule? It's USC.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, go on, federal. Um, you know, I, I think we are gonna have an opportunity to dig into this a little more at a future, at the July meeting. So, um, I, I guess I'd like to move on. Thank you very much, again, you do have the cool of Pam. No offense, my fault.
The bar is set high, yeah.
Let's go ahead to my, uh, Michael Moore, Director of Technology.
Um, just taking off of something Matt had brought up, uh, free reduced lunch, that does play into technology funding for the district. Uh, key rates, category one, category two. Category one is your network infrastructure, category two is a list of stuff that can be picked from, that's beyond that. Uh, our free reduced lunch count gets thrown into a formula, and then that formula helps determine how much reimbursement we can get for that too. And we fluctuate between the seventy and eighty percent range, depending on the year, kind of follows back and forth. So, I've been asking Matt too, is there a way to encourage families to fill out this form, whether you need it or not, so if you qualify, it's money that's being saved in your pocket, money being reimbursed in the district, but you can't really.
We're doing everything we can, we do, we do.
Well, you have, yeah, I, I think what you have to do is inform the entire community.
What we do at the beginning of the year, we send a, a letter of nothing, we include one right in there, so everybody has one, so.
Yeah, and that's what we've been doing, is we've been doing everything we can within parameters that are such. So on the twenty-four, or, I had a report last year, that said upcoming things would be replacing the district's two servers and storage devices that were reaching end of life. Replacing the end of life firewall, that was from twenty fifteen. Uh, Chromebooks for the freshmen, uh, Chromebook carts for the middle school, so we can keep them on site. And then, let's see, continue our center of security awareness, and then all Windows devices would have to be upgraded to Windows eleven or whatever's coming after Windows eleven. So that's what I kind of predicted last year would happen this year. And I need to figure out how to get lottery tickets in that vein. So anyways, um, uh, the current report here, um, on our network, we did replace two servers and the storage device within bucket. Uh, we replaced the district's end of life firewall, uh, using a promotion. We buy the software security suite that has a whole bunch of components built into it to do the protective services. We had a participant, you do it annually, three years or five years, there was a promo, if you buy the software for three years, you get the hardware upgrade for free. So we did that, so and it actually came in less than the previous time, we did that by all three thousand dollars. So that was kind of nice, that was. Um, with the replacement of the servers, the storage device, and the firewall, all of our core network components are fully updated within the last two school years now. So our whole core is good to go for, I guess, in five to seven years, depending on how the market shifts around. Uh, first, the twelve-way Chromebooks, we implemented those charging carts for sixth through eighth grade classrooms. So now all Chromebooks trades one through eight, stay in-house, nine through twelve are the ones that go home. Uh, damaged USBC charging ports are kind of the beta by existence, whoever thought of using those as a charging device for student devices should not be doing it anymore. But the trick is, they're going for universality. So Apple is now all USBC, they used to have their lightning, their thunderbolt, all the different connectors, Apple is now going forward, all USBC. Uh, Chromebooks are determined by Google, Google says this is the hardware you have to run to be a Chromebook and be certified, so the manufacturers have to meet that. Uh, the issue is the USBC plug has twenty-four pins. To give twenty-four pins, a plug that's twelve, a top plug on the bottom, you bend one a little bit, also you short out the charging circuit on your, on Chromebook. I don't know if you saw recently the news, the big smoke your Chromebook TikTok trend that was going on. Uh, basically, what students are doing are inserting devices into the USBC charging port, to short out the charging circuit, which shorts out the battery, which makes your Chromebook smoke, and you're basically frying it from the inside out. Uh, fortunately, we didn't get hit with that hard here, other districts got hit really hard, uh, if you look it up, NBC News was broadcasting across the nation, that was the latest TikTok trend.
So there were some that did it?
Here, we don't have any proof that anybody actually did it, uh, we have a few students that look like they might be trying, we're encouraged not to. Uh, so as far as we know, none of them that had come in have, you can usually tell because you can see the burning and the charing, we have not seen that as of yet. Um, but the thing I've noticed is we're having issues, even last year, with the Chromebooks were, they just, they wouldn't charge anymore. And I found a supplier or a vendor up in, uh, Wasop area that would replace the USBC port on the system board. Well, he replaced that to this rate of about thirty percent success rate, replacing that, only thirty percent of the time, a lot of the Chromebooks charged. The issue was, whatever shorted out there caused the circuit on the system board to short out, so it doesn't function. He actually took it to the next step, he used thermal imaging to figure out where the short was, ordered a chip from China, a couple weeks, big bucks, he replaced it. Now it's the next chip further down the circuit was fried. He said it's pointless, he didn't charge us for that, he said, can I do this for experimental, I'm like, why don't you go charge us, ask yourself out, that's what he did. So he literally should be chasing the whole circuit, he said it's pointless. Um, and part of it is, you just got so many pins so close, they get bent up either the plug or the receptacle, shorts it out, you're done. Which what I'm doing going forward now is I'm making sure all Chromebooks you get have two charging ports. So if one of them's fried, hopefully everyone keeps working for a while. The other nice thing is, the primary one is on the system board. That one gets fried, you're like a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty dollars for system board, if you can get, it's a newer model, it's tough to get it, cause they're not in supply. Um, the sideboard, the I/O board or daughter board, as it's called, up forty dollars. So if I could replace that, if it gets fried, as well, it's money ahead, um.
But you're frying, you're frying one, it's, is that, you're saying that it's going down into the chip set?
It's doing the circuit, it's just.
They add two different, if, if.
No, they're two different circuits.
So frying one, oh, it's not gonna stand at any.
It hasn't, hasn't yet. I have some, the main motherboard port doesn't work, the daughter I/O board still does, but there's some functionality I can't remember, battery disconnect. Like when we get chip, Chromebooks brand new, they're in a state called battery disconnect, which means they won't turn on until you plug in the power. I do that every summer, so when Chromebooks come in, they get cleaned, they get a battery disconnect, it's not a physical thing, it's a software thing, so when they're in storage, the battery doesn't lose charge as much, it's better for the battery, if the motherboard port is fried, I can't do a battery disconnect. But I can still charge through the daughter.
Is this a real intense level of detail to, how much do we want in overview?
Yeah, I can keep going through this, I'm gonna bring that up and answer questions that were presented to you.
I know, you know, I guess I'm guessing my power, how much detail do you want? Cause I don't understand what we're talking about.
Yep, answering questions this week, yeah. Um, broken up the evil lost charges, until the protective workers kind of clear their head too, we found more so in the middle school than other parts of the district, but, partially, of course. We're gonna keep your cybersecurity initiatives, moving through the trainings and things like that, telling you probably got the spoof mails, just to see how you react. Again, if we get things that are determined to be phishing, use a little orange fish, that's a report of this phishing, um, to move forward with that. Upcoming, new Chromebooks for freshmen in fourth grade classes be coming up, uh, the high school freshmen will get eight gig of RAM, just because they do more intense things with the Chromebook. Chrome operating system becoming more bulky, so it helps Chromebook react faster. Yours have four gig of RAM, eight gig is twice as much, they perform a little faster, you know, wait this long. Now, we're gonna continue to invest in our center of security moving forward with authentication, uh, campaigns, multi-factor authentication. And passing the, multi-factor authentication's been going very well, um, and first, there was usually pushback on, but in the district here, I haven't had any pushback whatsoever. A lot of them were pushing back for using a personal cell phone, I just said, I recommend my staff uses backup, cause if they don't have their key, they're gonna have the phone. So it's a backup, and I haven't got pushback, I haven't at all, which is really good. Uh, all Windows devices would be updated to Windows eleven, since they haven't come out with Windows twelve, or whatever you wanna call it, as of yet. They were talking, it should have been out sometime last year already, still not out. I know, upgrade to Office twenty twenty-four as well, that's the latest version of Office that's out there, um. So that's where we use Publisher, for most people I talk to, that's not a big deal, Matt and I use Publisher quite a bit, we'll have to find some other way of doing it. But Publisher disappears in Office twenty twenty-four. Windows ten end of life is October fourteenth of this year, so if you have Home, you see with Windows ten, need upgrade. End of life being that it's no longer secure device. So your credentials that you pass through it are no longer secure, payments made through it are no longer secure, uh, someone can take over your computer, turn it off, while you're sleeping, and you won't know. New Windows devices, about sixteen gig of RAM and a two sticks hard drive, that's what I recommended, some people have asked, um, for, what to do for upgrading. Uh, we purchased an additional stick of RAM for all administrator PCs, business lab PCs, teacher PCs, so they will run Windows eleven. Rather than new machines, just add the memory, they're still good. The tech ed laptops, and substitute teacher laptops, and utility laptops, the ones that run different stations in the building, those lots have been replaced. They're so old that the processor, the hardware is not supported with Windows eleven. Uh, the clever touch panels in the district, we have been, well, my predecessor Chris purchased them starting in twenty nineteen, over to twenty twenty-three was our last purchase of a new board, so to speak. We're gonna be upgrading all of them, so they're all running the same, thus from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-three, there is a difference in what they do, how they work, how they run. The twelve oldest ones, we can't update by putting in a new system unit, so we're gonna have to replace those. All the other ones, like this one, they need a new system unit in, so we can Google certify, meaning that pretty much becomes an Android home. You can do everything Google native on here, you don't have to keep connecting to your laptop to do things with Google, since we're heavily invested in Google, they can all do it natively out there.
Michael, can you talk briefly about what, those twelve that will no longer be in use as a clever touch, what the?
We're gonna make some, as a large display somewhere in the district, uh, folks, I have been on, more than else, is displayed in each of the schools. Uh, out in the athletics venue, displaying records, things like that, places where we want a large screen display, this is a seventy-five, the others are sixty-five. They still do an HDMI plug-in, they just can't be networked, and they can't really get upgraded anymore, they're kind of frozen in time. But they'll still work as connecting an HDMI to them, to have something displayed through them, as a large display, so rather than just junk them, reuse them till the picture too goes on.
And all of that is projected to happen in the next calendar year? And all of that's in the budget?
Yes.
Yep, yeah.
And the last one, there's a new phone system.
Yeah, so who, who do we have a phone system here?
Our phone system is an on-premise system from Mitel, which has been around forever, basically, it started in seventy-one. Um, Mitel is what I have been running in the previous district this month.
And that is upgrading our system?
Mitel is the product, our vendor is a different vendor, but Mitel is what is the.
And who's the vendor?
The vendor is Camp Park, connecting point at Green Bay. So I have four different vendors right now, so bidding bids for a new phone system.
And what does the new phone system mean if we didn't do it this next calendar year? Like, it just means that something could happen and there isn't a part, or is it broken?
They stopped selling parts in December of twenty point four. Um, they were projected to continue doing security updates and security patches. There's a run on a Windows server. So anytime Windows doesn't update, they have to make sure their software will keep running. In April last year, so Windows did something that broke their system. So we had to get that fixed. In December, they're no longer doing that. So as Windows keeps updating, it's still frozen in time right here. So whether it works or not, we won't know. So as of the end of this year, it's no longer getting updates, patches, anything like that, it's frozen in time. It was supposed to be December twenty twenty-nine, but Mitel had bankruptcy in March. Which is why this was a surprise to our vendor as well. Our vendor didn't even see it coming, we were all looking at December twenty twenty-nine, so we had a window to migrate to something different. Uh, but in March, Mitel had bankruptcy, and so now December twenty twenty-five, we're stopping, investing in, upgrading and maintaining the product. It's got our vendor I surprised, too. And we're not the only school, there are many schools in this thing.
So you have good stuff with four vendors?
I have four vendors putting bids in for a phone system at this point. Two of them are fitting, they're proposing the same system. So I've got three systems, four vendors currently.
Michael, talk about to, say, to Julie's point, like, let's just say, talk to me about worst case scenario. If we didn't upgrade the phone system after December, talk about some hypothetical experience in that.
Windows isn't updating, crashes it again, we're stuck, no phones. Or no features are wrong. This last one, we lost some features, the system still functioned at the basic level, but we lost the ability to do voicemail and the ability to do a couple other things in the system. Because it relies on components in Windows to do some of its stuff. And when Windows change that, it's not communicating to do it, so those features of that phone system disappeared. We could still make calls out, receive calls in, but unless somebody picked up that call, nobody needed to phone in.
Why can't we just do something like your PDF, just, just put that out there, like, a local phone company?
TDS is our telephone line provider, but the whole system has to come up something. Cause we have phones in every room for security reasons, and we have an on-premise server that puts them all together and runs them all, handles all voicemail. Cause we have fifteen lines coming into the district via-
Lots of different, lots of different parts here.
Four of the four vendors too, here.
I'm sorry?
Who are the four vendors there?
The vendors at this time, um, Skyward, camera product connecting point was our current provider. Um, IBS Systems, who's developed security cameras in the district. And I can't remember the name of the fork, cause it's a hookup through my Chromebook vendor.
So, so not like a local vendor like Sawyer?
They're a provider, but not a vendor.
Yeah, they're young vendors, I mean, they can, they can quote you. I mean, they would, they would connect with the vendor, just like camera corner isn't the vendor either, they're connecting you to the vendor.
They're a manufacturer, yeah, and they provide, because, to, your TDS provides a total service. And then we have a system running on top to distribute that service to our district.
With not having our junior take the Chromebooks home this year, something we started new, how much of a reduction in, uh, Chromebook injuries did you see?
I'm still seeing screens, um, happening because of transport. Even though the Chromebooks stays at school, they're still transporting from room to room. So it has reduced, but I don't think it's reduced quite as much.
And, and a lot of it is, thank you for the segue, actually, Michael. So we actually have some thoughts about that because that is something we look at when we look at the data.
Yeah.
Is, a lot of this is the proactive piece of, we need to set expectations for outfits and taking care of this. Cause I think, I would probably not be in that tier, but a lot of this is happening at the middle school level, that area. So-
And much less loss of chargers, we're not doing anywhere. But we're still in the damage to the device.
Is, we've talked about some options of potentially having the Chromebooks stay in the classroom. So they would become a classroom set, which is what I familiar with from my former district is, they, they stayed in the classroom, so you had number six Chromebook. You use that in every room we went to, so then they're not even taken up from room to room. It's an option you could look at to avoid transporting Chromebooks. So we're looking at further ways to maybe cut down on that, or cases, putting more robust cases on them. That comes with a cost. We, we looked at that, but with our budget, we ended up cutting that out because of the cost was prohibitive. It was like, to put Chromebook cases on the robust ones was like twenty thousand dollars. And we cut that from the budget, so we are, we're looking at the data, we didn't see this dramatic. And I guess, like, this is one thing I would say, who knows what it would have been if they were taking them home. Like, they went up, we don't know. But I think we'll get some longitudinal data and, and we'll continue to look at, how are we, you know, reinforcing the kids? Like, here's proper care, like, here, here's how you take care of your Chromebook. And more of that enforcement piece and the proactive piece, so.
The pros and cons of each different scenario.
And when something happens, I'm sorry, if, when something happens, um, families are responsible paying for these repairs?
If it is intentional customer abuse damage, that would be covered by a warrant. It, it narrows the problem, Chris, determining you would be surprised at it, because we hear of kids.
You're gonna hear of them?
Correct.
Well, like, I mean, I, I, I don't mean to be like extreme or anything, but stern talking to the students with the ability to accept responsibility and that there's gonna be some disciplinary action if some of this stuff happens. Is that being done?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and I would be, I'm gonna speak about, I mean, that scenario, Chris, you would be shocked. And for instance, a Chromebook is in a locker, not supposed to be in there, buried under stuff. And it seems pretty cut and dry, that, that substrate damage, you'd be surprised at the arguments we will get from families about, well, that wasn't intentional, that it was a, it, it's amazing. So there's a lot of pushback and, yes, it, it is, and, and sometimes it's a matter of, can we prove intent? Would someone say that? And it's a struggle to say, Michael, what, what percentage of repairs, off the top of your head, would you say we actually are able to get reimbursed for from the families?
Twenty-five to forty percent, sounds alright. Is there an insurance sheet with me?
Some is truly accidental, it, it is accidental, and then we don't wish it.
Accidents, you know.
Yep. We talked about accident, we talked about, this is something that's been discussed, some districts give parents the option of taking out accidents with in-house accident insurance. So maybe twenty-five dollars, and that covers that, and, and that offsets some of those costs. So that is something discussed last year, was actually looking at.
Well, I get two hundred and forty percent there for insurance.
Yeah. So, yeah, it's a challenge.
Another question, um, one of our goals was to reduce screen time this year in the classroom. Do you know if that happened? Could you tell, or?
I can't tell without doing the software viewing uptime. Um, in high school, it's hard to tell because screen time is also outside of the school. Um, that would be more of an internal figure.
I would probably talk to the principals would be good.
Yeah.
I'm not saying Michael's not important.
I mean, I, no, I do dive into software and see screen time, but it does differentiate for single women, that's what I heard.
But it's also to Rick's question, what's your anecdotal data as you travel the hallways of your buildings as far as, are we seeing it? And we said that from the beginning, it's obviously there's a goal, there's no way to measure it. I mean, like, for kind of habit, the goal was to reduce it, like, what, you know, I know you're having-
You walk past classrooms and the Chromebook is up in front of the students, you know, doing this, they're having dialogue, they're having conversations, they're having, you know, the next year will be more having lip circles with the E L A departments and doing more of the collaboration between peers versus, you know, there's still some points for the captain, you know, to visit the classroom, and get the assignment, so if the teacher's not there, but, I would say, I mean, I wasn't here the year before that, but it's a little hard for me to, but I would see, you know, a lot of students even in speech class. Now, they write their speech on their Chromebook, and then they're standing in front of their group of peers and, and reciting that, you know, by their memories, um, you know, not on their Chromebook. So I saw a lot of collaboration, I saw a lot of hands-on activities, you know, I just think of, um, there was a crayfish, we did that crayfish lab out in, in the river, and, and I think that was really cool, you know. So like, things are happening, I would say we're, we're, I think we could do a little bit more. Um, and we can always get better, but it's hard when everything is so digitalized and that's the, that's the society we live in.
And it was purposeful, when we ordered workbooks, there was a digital option. And then there was the physical materials option to get the workbooks. We chose the physical material, which was a flood of hair cost, with the idea behind, obviously, if we get the digital version, we're going against what our goal was, spending more time on the Chromebooks. So there is some method to demand this, but, uh, as far as being able to give data, like, to track data, it'd be really tough to. Now, I will tell you, our goal is gonna continue, like, next year is to further increase. So it's like, let's continue to reduce that. Um, and that's the goal, is to keep moving forward with reducing that screen time, so.
Any other questions for Michael, or are we ready to move on to direct students services?
Thank you, Michael.
Keep up the good work.
Do you want it as a slide show?
Oh, no, it's smaller than it. We can all with it. Okay, okay, actually, some changes to the show, um, just out of everything, I've been sitting here, or getting, we can, you know, think, um, season cool down. But I split this up by highlights, accomplishments, what we're looking forward to next year, and some goals for next year too, which, wine with Jason, strategic planning that we presented, um, or reviewed, and our building goals for our high school and our elementary school. So, one of our big highlights is hiring a speech and language pathologist. So I know that was a big change at the beginning of the school year, to go from a part-time to a full-time and questioning case loads. And I, nothing but to assure you that it was the best decision for our district. Um, I'm hearing nothing about any reports from students themselves, teachers, um, that have reported really great experiences with those students, and just what they see, um, my own observation, and, um, parents have also reached out, multiple parents that reached out about the, um, how things have been so positive and the growth that they've seen with their children this year. So, I just wanna reassure you, thank you for allowing me not to pass at the beginning of the school year. Um, also hiring our annual site, that has been extremely helpful for some of our efforts with our multi-level systems of support at the elementary school. Um, we've been able to tap more into providing functional behavioral assessments for students. We're communicating strong needs, um, in the classroom, to put it, um, best. Um, and then with that, being able to support with the individual intervention plan, which students support claims that they call them. Next thing is our high school coffee shop, that has been, um, made to be brought up. Sawyer has really headed that, and Laurie Elwood, to, um, her professional at the youth school. Uh, seeing students, and turn up to speak to, shooting them every day, coming into the office. And their social skills have improved immensely since the beginning of the school year, um, they're working on money skills. And, um, they're just a part of something, I think it helps people, like, skill in general, it's just something, um, I can't speak to previously. But just what we see this year is a really positive impact on students. I'm excited to see that continue. Uh, collaboration with our administrators, like, all of them in the room, we are all new. So our collaboration together and, um, the grace that they grant me, and a mom of three kids also balancing this. And there have been many days where I've had colleagues that can work from home, and, and Jason too, has just been very supportive for this first year, navigating this role and doing all the things. Um, we are partnering with C to five for our Wisconsin multi-level systems of support. So that's helping our teachers support our students, working with students at an universal level, it's been our biggest shift this year. And next year, we will continue to work on that, um, as well as supporting our tier two, but we got tier one, tier two, and tier three, where we should have the smallest amount of students at the top, um, so that, that tier three actually lessens the, lessens the need for the tier three support. Um, if you have any questions too, along the way, just feel free to interrupt me. Uh, the job fair, uh, one thing, I didn't really know what to expect going to that, but bringing home, so to speak, to hires at, at that, that was a pretty exciting and crazy experience to see the competition with other areas of school districts and that kind of studying, um, so that was kind of my highlight this year. Legislative breakfast was also a big highlight, um, I didn't really know what to expect from that, but speaking in front of, and two legislators asking for our rules, school district was, like, I lost that going, yeah, yeah, I'm ready to go, that was really neat. So, um, looking forward to doing more of that next year, um, especially this year with the state of everything, it was just, it was good. Um, I was also able to attend the Wisconsin Home Club Administrators and Special Services Spring Conference. This spring, that was probably the most valuable conference that I've attended to date and as part of my career. I was able to network with other area directors, um, and from around the state. I was able to get specialized programming ideas. I was, I took away a lot, kind of contacts with other directors about different topics that they had expertise entitled by. So I can build my network and have them to know my questions about things. Um, and I also, one of my, um, first question here too, one of the keynotes was supporting students with special needs with school CAC. That's something that we're tapping into, um, possibly in terms of next year is having a cohesive plan for our school CAC measures. And then really being committed to the best practices for that with students with special needs. Um, that's some of the things I hadn't thought of before, and some videos that we shared that I plan to incorporate into our training for our staff here, which is going to be really helpful. Um, and then being able to hire special education teachers to replace our vacant positions that nobody's seen to do that. And it's always, um, hard to fill positions. So that is definitely a highlight this year, is ending your having those positions, so. Um, two things, the high school graduation, it didn't help you then. But the high school graduation video shakes the hands of the graduates, that was really, um, something I didn't know if they'd be a part of, but I'm glad that I was, because it was just a good experience to tell, tell them how proud I am of them when they're walking across the stage, and it, it just reminds you of why you're doing what you're doing, so that's the end goal of mine. Um, and then Project Search, um, I have not personally been into this Project Search program and been able to tour anything, but, I attended the graduation, I handed, um, one of our, um, graduates a diploma and the ceremony. It was wonderful, and the video that played, I, I really got a good picture of Project Search in general, and working with Ann Deck through all the school year. Um, it was a really good collaboration, so that was also a highlight of the year. Alright, some accomplishments. Completing my first year as a director, I'd like to say huge accomplishments, I feel like I haven't had a chance quite to bring just yet, but hopefully soon. Um, I learned a lot, and I, I also learned, I will always continue to argue that as well, because it's never, um, never, it's still, I guess, constantly, constantly learning. Very practical, our functional behavioral assessment, it really separates you, um, where it's students can be in your classroom, and how it supports them. About our helping teachers understand, um, when this happens, this is what happens, this is how the counselor and doctor, this is how we react and the perpetual cycle to the times that, it's just what having observer coming from outside the classroom coming in to support with those. Um, that's what we have been implementing with many students, and then again, implementing during legislative plans with our district. One of the biggest things that I didn't realize that I was taking on this year when I first signed up was our procedural self-assessment, our procedural compliance self-assessment. This is for V P I, every five years, as the director, I have to audit our I E Ts and go through this process where you have created team. I had all of our special education teachers, they were thrilled, uh, we do this audit of our sample of students. Um, then we submit those to V P I, what we found, and then they give us, um, a, a period from January through April to take, show what you've learned, and then you have to, um, give another set of samples to V P I, and they give you corrections. So we are at step two of basically three-step process right now, so we're so close to being done with them, they cannot wait. Um, but that is, that's going all for the most part, we have very little on air. Um, I completed a big grant, hopefully that we get, fingers crossed, for next year. Um, but we won't find out till July, with the way that funding is right now, uh, hopefully it's still a grant that will be available. But it's the E S three grant, it's a three-year grant for enhancing social and emotional skills for students with I E Ts, individual education plan. Um, what would happen is we, we would have somebody coming in to work hand-in-hand, supporting our structures and processes to identify and support the belief skills and to support our students. In general, so we're working directly with teachers in the classroom, working with parent professionals, working with our special education teachers to, um, coach them and work through basically adult beliefs to, to support our students, um, with social and emotional ease, especially those who are divergent thinkers. With our homeless, um, we can event though- With our homeless, um, we can event though, we've, I've been working closely with our school, our district social worker and, um, we've added some new outlets to our district for that information in the form for families to fill out. We're trying to make it more, um, and into our verification process and we are, we want families to be able to come forward and, and try that for them if they need help, so we can provide for them without. Wait, may I ask you? Training services teamwork are very successful, but I work very closely with our training services team, special elementary school, um, with the population students that we have there. And we are working through, and with seats, some seats on our own, um, me weekly, just going through our child study team, so any students identified that need more support, we're talking about our structures, really this year had been a growth year and learning year. They're getting to know us as administrators, us getting to know them, and then also harnessing our rules and responsibilities. That's been, um, a big part of this year. And so, we're all really excited as a team to, to start moving forward, we have an idea of where we want to go. And you don't know what you don't know the summer before the school year when you need to plan all these things. So, it'll be, it'll be great to move forward and continue working as a team. Working with, uh, special education teachers, doing sure for our sports are being sent out, uh, quarterly families, providing, um, them with timely information about the goals related to their students ID. Um, I also applied for a grant through Associated Bank, so a plus, online to Associated Blank Bank, thank you, we receive, um, a good chunk of money to provide our parents to go to the C two five for a professional summit this summer. They went last year and the feedback that I received was extremely positive, so I'm excited. And they were very excited and appreciative of the opportunity to go again this year. Um, and then one of the last items here is, uh, taking inventory, they say we're taking inventory of both elementary school and middle school and high school this year and figuring out what areas do we need to have much support with. So budgeting for our math intervention program, um, buffing up our reading intervention program and social skills, life skills. Um, so, yes, I'm here to tell you I'm paying more money towards that, but it's all for a very good cause because it's for the students. And, um, so yes, it is part of budget for next year. Um, and then we've also budgeted, that's for a screener, uh, our student service team is heading that, they're very excited to get screener again so that we can play essentially mental health themes in our district, create groups, work with students. Yeah. Next, for next year, um, one of the big things I'm tackling this summer is to become a nonviolent crisis prevention institute trainer, or training trainer. Um, our district is saying pay C two five for like some years and C two five requires you to be trained every year, every summer, wherever you figure it out with C two five, um, who submits in a moment change. That we are getting C two five that, um, I feel could be better used if I become the trainer, I will be able to do the training in our district, be in our district, be in a mall, and I would also be able to fake out training, do refresher. Um, I think staff would be a little appreciative of that and then I would just be able to be more hand-bound and a go-to resource than our district because I would essentially be that, that expert with C two five. No pressure for the year, I think. CPI de-escalation skills training for all staff. Um, this is something that is a brief, key opportunity that we're going to roll out this summer in service, um, it would be to our training, but for all staff to have the knowledge base of how to deal with young students. Um, not, so CPI this last year, we have our half teams for our hand-ons, we do, um, for the restraint.
Supclusion and restraint?
Yeah, supclusion and restraint, like hand-ons, having to restrain students. Um, we have our need teams for that, but then we also open it up, anybody who wants to, we don't force them to. This one is going to be one of those mandatory trainings that is given to all staff members and it's going to hopefully help with awareness and how to be more proactive in the classroom.
So you're the, you can go through the whole portion of the CPI training?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yep. This de-escalation one will not, but it's, uh, they hopefully be more proactive before it ever gets to that point. Yeah. Our multi-level system supports manual, this is something new and I haven't even actually seen this, something that will have to be forged approved, so it may be coming for you to look at. Uh, Rachel, our school psychologist and I will be working closely, I'm developing this. Um, we just want something that can fit in and have a protocol and process for staff. As for basic questions, we can refer them to the manual and we can refer to the manual itself and keep that consistent, um, how, um, the process of even a special education referral, what do you do if you're having trouble with a behavior in your classroom? This is what you can refer to. And it's just founding ground for, for all of our student services too. I'm working with special education teachers, will definitely be at the top of my priority list next year to help, um, with retention of our special education teachers. Um, providing training colleges or writing a study, we also have something that is on the docket for next year. Our speech and language model is shifting to a three-to-one model. So that means that she will be working with students directly three weeks out of the month and one week out of the month will be indirect services. And means that she will be collaborating with teachers, parents, and then she will also be getting into the classroom to support the student within the classroom setting. And, and right now we have students that are asking, they can leave the room to go. But they're sorry, don't anticipate that being, she's very much her being in the room because I know that's always a question that pops up is how does that affect the awareness of students? At this time, we're really not concerned about that. Think, that was just a bit off. Um, I would like to increase our current collaboration, I, I mean, there's a lot to take on this year and one of the areas are multilingual learners. Um, I've spent attending some things more recently in May that have brought my attention as far as the ways that we can better support our multilingual learners, so that's something that's on the docket for next year, tackle that with our E L coordinator, um, because that you fill out the area that needs some more improvement.
We applied for a fifty thousand dollar grant that we were always looking for to support that work because of our increasing population of multilingual learners.
Thank you.
Well, if we get that, you know, and, I mean, is this to be a re-used by a staff that we already have?
Yeah. Or you could, it could cover staffing, it could cover resources to support, so it could cover existing, like, existing staff or it could be determined, if the need was determined like a, I'll give a scenario, a multilingual para, the district used to have one, it could be used to offset those costs so that if, if we were to receive the grant, there's a multitude of things that it could be used for, including offset existing salaries.
Ultimately, somebody has to do that. And either we're going to be taking away from our teachers, we're going to be utilizing their time where it should be spent, you know, what, what they're originally doing. So ultimately, we would almost need more help to push this kind of program forward.
Well, I don't, like, we have, Ms. Galan is already in that role, or she teaches management, like, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be taking away from, like, it would be enhancing existing services with, the scenario of adding a position would be once a year and it could be explored, but it could be bringing in, like, Danny talked about those resources, like, for special education services, like, to, to offer like tier-two supports, it could be the same thing to use for resources, it just, I guess maybe I'm not understanding.
I think that answers it, because I, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't like, that we had some money in place that we'd be able to come forward with this multilingual education after being taught and not, not taking away time from.
No, no, it would be enhancing existing resources and it wouldn't be taking away from other sorts of services, I think.
You bring up a good point, going to enhance our special education programming and boosting our universal support in the classroom with our general education teachers too, to be able to, giving them the tools to be able to support all learners, special education, multilingual learners, local socioeconomic, even though we're at, my ability to increase and work on that this year. To my next point, um, our district is shifting just our thought process and our mind beliefs, or our belief in thinking with how to serve students with special needs to co-plan and co-starve. So, again, be more proactive in the, the, after the staff with how we adapt things in classroom tests. This is the big one, um, that hopefully our admin team, our admin coalition, who can tackle this and go forward and do it.
Kind of culture shift.
It is a culture shift, yeah, yep. Basically, we're, we're having our special education teachers be able to really scan where their students are and then be able to fit and collaborate with those teachers with what they need, rather than keeping all students' ability level wide in one classroom, which tends to happen sometimes in our district, but it, it's like a pension thing.
Sure.
Yeah. Yep.
A lot of.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's going where the need is, the student need, rather than placing the students where the adult is.
Yeah. Yep. Yep. Um, and that goes with, like, when you're selecting curriculum, you're selecting curriculum and might have a goal for it, and I need to continue my MLS stuff work on multi-level systems of support, um, student services to strengthen our universal support. Our school and psychologists is also increasing our hours next year, so that will help, um, our efforts even more, tapping into our expertise, she's got a different line with the, the system of support that she brings to our team, so being able to tap into her more, I'm really excited about that for next year. And we're also hoping to get our, our special, our speech and language teacher out more, also to like start connections with daycare, we've got three-year-olds that will be in the area of things we'll be into and how we can best support them, even child crime effort. And that's something that I'd like to do and bring upon next year too, with like a developmental day in the spring, um, or winter, late winter, early spring, to help identify students that may need more support from our team. Okay, next. Okay, goals for next year, and that they align with our strategic plan for our district and then building level goals. So we talked about our report card this year and we brought up that the lower quartile is an area that we need to focus on, and if we can really tap into that lower quartile, that would have an astronomical effect on our report card, because Jason does our job explaining this and I can, but it factors differently, um, based on our population.
The rules to work through our quartile.
Yeah. We really have to do that. But, report card aside, I mean, the ultimate goal is to support these students in a way that, um, is better than what we're currently doing now, so that collaborative effort with our teachers and our admin. So, to boost our academic achievement and behavior as well, so our academic achievement will be measured by our report cards and then our behavior will be measured by our number of dissonant referrals documented in our system. And then, um, this lovely building goal two is having, so we're supporting all of our students so that they feel one hundred percent of connection, one hundred percent of students does connection with either adult or, an adult and a parent. Any questions? Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, childcare. It'll be a little bit, little bit shorter than math.
Uh, there were a couple things that I added too, I was kind of sitting here thinking. Um, but basically, a lot of our, like, projects we completed, we have transformed that storage room into that infant room and that's been running since January. There are some things we've been meaning to do there, such as like the removal of, like, our dry erase boards and then once we do that, like, sealing and painting those rooms, it's kind of like a big project we can't just, like, do in one day. But, but something that we've been tending on. Couple things we've done also is we had, we just finished a family engagement night at the end of the year that we had fifty-two total, um, kids and figures and family numbers that attended, which was a great outcome and we actually did that out at Lucy's Garden and it was actually, we had like terrific weather for it, so that was really great. And then those are going to be shared with our social media, so you'll be able to see some of those pictures and stuff from that day. And then upcoming, some of our Wood County grant projects, we're going to be working on these bathroom updates, such as with Lori and our sinks and mirrors and our toilets in our, between our ones and our twins room, just because right now they're set up for, like, four or five-year-olds, so we're trying to make it a little bit easier for teaching those basic life skills for those little toddlers and then just easier, um, on the teachers, less having to clean up stuff when their kids are able to kind of do some of those things themselves. Also working on, like, painting the walls and just kind of deep cleaning and updating, like, our tile flooring, because I don't even know how long it's been there, so, just kind of that stuff to update. And then we have some playground updates that we're hoping to kind of finalize here to get going this summer, um, for like our under-two age group and just some more centering materials, um, such as like more, um, musical things or just things for them to dig in. Our kids love to dig holes, so trying to just like type some more things out there that, um, keep their, their brains thinking. A couple other things that I wanted to add to this was, you know, our goals moving forward is, is obviously to keep filling those rooms to our capacity. Um, staffing wise for summer is pretty good, so we're hoping to add in more kids and then just kind of retain all these staff to have our rooms be all available all year. Um, a couple other things that I, these are a couple of them I've added on, if I was getting my thinking a little bit more. Um, but, something we brought up was like having a sign for our child care center. Um, we don't have anything that kind of displays, whether it's at our school, by our door, or even like coming into town, that we are a child care center within our school. Um, so we're hoping to like kind of come up with something that we can have either, like, on our door or a window, something that, like, so people know we're here. Um, and just to kind of, um, help bring in, you know, more students and help bring in staff and just familiarize them that we are located within the elementary school. Um, another thing was like also updating our, our website. Uh, we are just in the school website, when you click on us, it's just pretty basic. Um, so just trying to work on making that more family-friendly, um, adding more pictures to kind of just show our classrooms and show what our kids are doing and adding a little bit more information so that it's out there for when someone researches us and is looking for more information. Just making us a little bit more eye-catching, I guess, you could say, and a, you know, a place for people wanting to come and bring their kids to. And moving on to, um, our numbers, right now our summer enrollment is kind of where it's at, um, our infant, we have seven, uh, we have two on our waitlist that will be coming in, uh, one at the end of this month and then one, um, at the end of, middle of July. And then we have six in our ones and then we have two that are also kind of coming in around the same time, the June and July. Right now our twos and threes is kind of where we're struggling, a lot of our preschool groups, um, from this last year are all going to be going into fourth grade. So a lot of them have switched now for June and are doing, um, summer school and they'll be kind of transitioning out of our center. So, we're really looking for, um, more twos and three-year-olds to kind of fill that room come fall. Um, for summer, we often, since we had the staffing and room availability, we opened up bringing in our fourth grade, sixth grade kids, um, so that we were able to retain some of those fourth grade kids. We also brought back some of our older siblings to some of our younger students and then we were able to bring them back on to the summer. For our waitlist, right now we just have two for summer in our infant and two for fall. Uh, we were able to bring out a lot of those and shifted over some of our elders to our ones and just kind of, um, continued that process of moving into different rooms. Uh, we still have two for summer on our one, we have one student on our waitlist for our twos and then one for summer and two for fall on our three waitlist.
Kelly, all of those that you've identified up above, right, so they're starting when they want to start, so they're on a waitlist, but they're not waiting because we can't take them, they're waiting because they're not ready to start yet?
Um, couple of them, like, yeah, there's two of them. Um, couple of them, like, yeah, there's, two of them for sure are like, parents are waiting, they're not going back to work yet. But yeah, it's not because we can't take them, it's because they're waiting for others.
Sure, so waitlist is like more.
It's more like a whole enrollment.
A future enrollment.
Future.
Like they're waiting on us.
Yeah.
And would you remind us, so infant, our goal would be eight, ones would be eight, what is our goal for twos and threes? What are we shooting for?
For our twos and twelves and our threes, with one teacher, we have thirteen. We currently don't have another teacher assigned in our preschool or twos, like, full-time.
So do we just currently have two teachers in infants, two in ones, and then one in twos and threes and one in fourth grade school age because, for ratio?
Yes, and we do have like our schoolteachers that come in and help as well. So they come in like, because you can't have one person in a classroom all day long by themselves. So then we have these little teachers down below that will like come in and they'll open in this room for so long and then they might move to a different room and help to give like someone a prep rate or like things like that. So that's what those little teachers are doing. But yes, for the teacher-wise, like that's what we have consistently with them as like the lead teacher, the one that's doing the lesson planning, the one that's doing the whole of the classroom.
So I have a question. In terms of the numbers right now for the twos and threes, we have six children currently enrolled in the twos and threes. And in terms of staffing, we have Erin as a teacher, but then we have Wendy starting in July.
So Wendy is going to be taking over Liz's position in the twos. So she's basically going to start and we're going to be kind of changing our rooms out because in July, we don't have summer school anymore. So like the summer school kids are only here for a half-day, like basically those afternoons. And then once July comes, then they'll resplit because we'll still have those. But we'll still have like those kids, we'll just split them differently because they'll be there full-time, like all day long rather than partial.
Okay, so if imperative, if we have two, if we're going to have Erin and Wendy, working with twos and threes, we need more than six kids?
Yes.
Because we can have twenty-five.
Yes.
Okay, just making sure. And it's not six, it's six plus one for the fall, plus one for the summer and two for the fall. We have three, four, five, we have eleven.
We, when we had our change for our summer holding, we, those teachers have opted to, a lot of them have opted to withdraw completely, so they won't be returning for fall. So when we did that, we lost five kids, which all would have returned for fall because none of them would be old enough to be in fourth grade yet. So some of them used to come, like kind of part-time in the fall, but all of them have opted to just withdraw at the end of the school year. So their last days were the end of May when we ended the school.
And as far as you know, they're not planning to tune back to fall?
Two have reached out to be put on a waitlist if we have available spots. But that's just kind of, I think them just putting that out there in case, they know, find other solutions over the summer. And then just kind of like our staffing-wise, like come fall, Sarah will be returning. She works here in the CTE building, so she'll be returning back that full-time over here. Then my student intern will, right now for summer she'll be available for like twenty hours, but then once the school starts, it's usually they only work maybe two to four hours a day in a week. So it just kind of depends on that. And then we'll be moving Kat eventually, she'll be going to military services. And Maya, she has no plans right now, so currently, and for the future, she's like just staying warm with us until she's graduated.
I think the advertising is a good idea, getting a little more highlighted.
Our flyers, yeah.
Wait, how do you define the advertise?
Well, I, I don't know, I didn't want to leave it there like that.
Okay.
I mean, like, I don't know how else to say it, what you, how do you explain it, you know, at least just displaying, you know, just so people in a conspicuous, you know, area, you know, so people can see. I mean, because you drive past and you really don't know anything unless you visit the website. You know, or, or, or a mall. Or, you know, benefits to working there type of thing, I mean.
Or if you're searching, you have a, you know, like on our site, there is something on there, but it's all local.
Yeah, it'd be nice for those who pass that some place that they're going to see something. And like, gee, why, I guess I never considered that, that type.
Yeah, and that was kind of like a thought behind when doing some kind of science. And just because like when you do go past another center, you usually can see their playground, you usually can see other things that let you know that it's a Childcare Center, whereas ours, our playground is a bath, you can't really see it. Our rooms are kind of bigger in a line, we can't really, we're not like in a designated building.
Recruiting children is, you know, it's really difficult because there's so many factors. As, you know, where people work and just even if they want to go back to work and, and all of those types of things. Have you had an opportunity to tap into any of the resources that can help with these types of things? I'm thinking specifically of Childcaring, or Childcaring Inc.
No, we actually have a cohort meeting Wednesday. That's actually in the, they're hosting it here in the community center. They, they have like different locations that they do it and then they go back to them. So this one is actually on Wednesday. So that has been something that we brought up in the topic of that, just kind of like seeing. A lot of people have, like, we had a giant waitlist with all our babies and that's where most of our waitlist has come from. And it's like just kind of keeping them going, I guess. Like our biggest group we've had right now is, and we are four taken. This is one of our biggest groups we've had since they were babies. So, so that's kind of like, kind of hard to move into that transition, which like our infants and ones, like these kids we've had now for a year or going into their second year. So some of those ones will be shifting into the, the twos come fall.
Yeah, you know, I, I think that there's a lot to be said for something like a cohort group and peer learning and all of that. But I believe that Childcaring also will do individual consultations. I mean, this is a tough nut to crack and you know that as a board, this is a make or break year. I mean, we have really some serious concerns about the financial viability of this continuing. So I, I would really encourage you, yes, to, you know, look at cohort and peer learning, but also tap into some of the consultative resources that Childcare offers free of charge.
I'm just curious, say somebody's employed at the hospital and they work a seven-to-three shift. I saw that you're changing your hours to seven AM to drop students off. They can't take advantage of this daycare kind of thing.
We are not changing our, those are what our hours are supposed to be.
How does someone take advantage then of daycare if it doesn't open until seven when they have to be to work at seven? I mean, that's, that's just a thought I have for how we recruit more kids to daycare a little bit earlier, hoping that would help.
But the issue when we, when like our hours changed, it was after COVID happened and we came back and we didn't have staffing. We didn't have staffing, we used to be open six-thirty to six-thirty. And then we struggled with like, we'd be open for six, you know, that, that extra half an hour and we'd maybe have one kid that would be here before school. So then you're paying a staff member to sit here with one kid that's paying, like at that time, our before-school program was cheap, like maybe three dollars and you're paying a staff member, you know, four times that for one kid. So when we, we changed that, a lot of our families, we didn't get a lot of respect from that. It was more or less like they adapted their schedules to be dropped out half an hour later. If we had someone like reach out and ask about it, it, then maybe we would start like keeping track of what it is, but we really don't have very many people calling and asking for earlier hours.
One more, one more thing. We had a, there was some condition that had to be done with that door last year or two years ago and we covered that in hopes that there was going to be a grant.
We received that.
We didn't receive that.
We received that and those are some things she talked about, the, the Wood County Grant for maybe a couple of dollars to cover those playground upgrades, that door cost and stuff, you know, we received that.
I knew we were not.
Yeah, no, we got it, the money, the money is in hand and we need to spend it on these, these things, including some of the other things, our staff retention. You can use the probably bonuses for staff retention or, you know, hot off the presses. But family, we've really been wrapping our brains like what are some ways that we can attract more, more kids and we didn't even talk about technically, under, if you want to get in the creative thinking, you're talking about staff bonuses, you can also talk about referral bonuses. And that would, we, we are pretty certain we're going to check that that would qualify, that some of that money can be used. So for instance, you, you know, someone finds their kid out and they say, Chris Wilson referred me, is you offer like a five-hundred-dollar referral bonus, if, and payable after ninety days. If the kid stays in, like trying to get, you know, creative, there's two pieces in our budget. Well, I mean, this, this is the reality where we're at and it's tough to think about the two things that are going to have a major impact. We think, Ben and I were stuck with this last week, as of June thirtieth, the childcare funding is gone. And the right now projections are twenty-five percent of existing childcare centers are going to go out of business on June thirtieth because there's such a small margin right now, that's losing that funding. Like, you know, as a district, we're looking at, we'd be actually forced to break even or come close to it. Those folks that are running this as an income, they can't just do that, they need to make a profit. They gotta pay people and they gotta make a profit to run it. So I, I don't wish ill on any other childcare centers, but it's very likely, it's June thirtieth, there's going to be a lot of families looking for childcare. So the idea would be how do we get info out that, hey, this wasn't supposed to be accepting, that, you know, those kids and students for that, so that, that's something to think about as far as what does this look like moving forward. The other thing I would say is, I don't know if people, like there are private childcare places out there, non-licensed private. Is that I don't know if maybe people do their research to know that if you use a private, non-licensed, you cannot deduct that, you cannot follow that deduction through your taxes. So sometimes it's a matter of people analyzing, like, don't cut off the nose to spite your face. Like, when you're really mapping dollars out, like what's the cost? Is that having a licensed place where you can deduct the taxes, you may end up doing the math and it may work out that, like, hey. So I'm just saying there's some wild character yet to play that could impact, but we have work to do, which is no question.
How long do we have to spend the Wood County money? And I guess we're deferring it into the next budget.
Correct, we are, and we said that in our budget proposal that we would be through September is what we were hoping that we would be able to have stuff sent by, but if not, we just need to notify them.
We can notify them when I ask for an exception.
Okay, and we couldn't be so creative that we could actually use the funding to provide a benefit to offset the cost of summer for people who don't want to bring their kids this summer and actually get those five kids back.
We can't do that based on one eighty rule. So we have to, we need to offer absolutely everybody that wants to have summer street.
Yeah, I would be remiss if I didn't say like, none of this is easy, but the reality is we know what this fiscal outlook looks like and if we didn't charge for the summers and continue, and that wouldn't be sustainable.
We have to get something for the summer, I was just wondering if we had another possibility to tap into this to bridge this one summer.
Yeah, it is that piece of like, the decision was, well, we had to, we had to do it, is charge for the summer and raise the rates just to even have the consideration, having things stay open moving forward, so. And, and I would hate to invest anything that's not sustainable into the future for offsetting costs. And the reality is right now, I feel we're within reason with what we're doing right now in this center comparatively to other childcare centers. Like this is perfectly within reason of like what we're offering, the product for the, for the price right now, so.
I think we'll have further discussion on this as we move along, you know, as, as we get through this next year. So, yeah, I'm trying to be cognizant of time. Thank you, Tabby. Next up is our elementary and high school principal.
So our high school goal this year was for students to take at least one rigorous, one rigorous course selection, whether it was dual credit, advanced placement, honors, level three class, and CTE, each year to guide their crew readiness, path upon graduation. So I gave out a student survey for end of May and in the next slide, I just give you a picture of how many students took these classes. Thirty-two students completed an advanced placement class and passed it. Hundred ninety-five students completed dual-credit classes.
Wait, 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 we don't have a hundred ninety-five students.
No, but they did take.
We have.
Well, some students could take a hundred, so a hundred and ninety-five students, so some of them, but, whatever.
Okay, I guess I'm instructed and I'm used to it. Okay.
I will, I will. So, so student A could have taken three dual-credit classes, so there's probably multiple students that have taken especially our higher levels because you get your junior senior.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
I know, it's coming, but it's not everybody, like students, a hundred ninety-five.
Forty-six students participated in advanced placement, or, sorry, in advanced classes. And then twenty-five students participated in one or two start college on classes, or early college classes. And then this is a breakdown by classes, so again, I spaced it off with one, which was our goal. So fifty-three percent of students participated in at least one rigorous course, eighty-eight percent sophomores, ninety-two percent juniors, and ninety-one percent seniors. And then the reason why you see freshmen so low is because they changed the dual-credit verification, I guess you could say, where they couldn't get the dual-credit unless they were sixteen years of age. So they changed that this year and hopefully we can better, I guess, educate families and students of that change moving forward.
So, and I would say that.
Children just don't have as much opportunity of what we can.
Or a rigorous. And that was my next, like, first of all, they don't have opportunity because they have to take their science and their English and their math. You know, if they still have one or two, we, when we did the course scheduling, they had one or two goals that they could fill because it's stuck out. You know, they have to, they have to start earning credit somewhere. So, you know, their elective classes, as you heard, at retirement, our AD numbers are skyrocketing for next year. So that's, that's great. So I, I would predict that those numbers would increase for them for the next four years. And then, next slide, please. So that was our academic goal, our social, emotional goal. Again, was for all students to participate in at least two activities. Here's our fall data, we shared in the fall, next slide, please. Our surveys were a little bit down, we had seventeen viewer surveys, not sure why, maybe it was the timing before Chromebooks were turned in. You know, students checking emails too, I'm not quite sure, but there's a couple reminders via email as well as announcements. But the numbers went down for at least one activity, they increased for two or more activities and then our numbers decreased for zero activities. And I think going through the survey results, better warning for next year. You know, if they're not in a court for the winter, you know, they didn't, they, they, they were in a, they were in an activity, but really they are, you know, they're in, you know, and so if we don't offer them pistols. But really they are, you know, they're in, you know, and so if we don't offer them physicals, you know, they're not involved. Well, we have a lot of kids that go on figure skating, dance, and that's not involved in physicals. We have to do a better job, um, in our survey and what are exactly the verbiage that we're using, um, for them to, you know, get after data. Next slide, please. So this is kind of lists, um, you know, we had eleven stu-, eleven students left for the fall to the spring, um, for our one curricular, or one extracurricular activity. So that number we should see going down if we want to increase, um, two or more extracurriculars. Uh, we gained two students, um, and then eight students, um, are involved in at least one activity. So we had less numbers for the zero activity participants. Next year, same idea with the goal, but it's improving our warning. Um, and then when we did do the survey, so we asked students like, what would you participate in? What, what do you want to see here at this one? Maybe if they can get an advisor, um, a lot of them, you know, I, I look at the summer school options, you know, there's a lot of kids that want to fish. Um, so like maybe involving a fishing club, you know, that's still involvement, um, obviously getting an advisor to do that. Um, so but offering some other things, you know, other schools offer archery, for example. We talked about that earlier today, you know, who could be offered archery here. Um, so thinking outside the box a little bit, um, and maybe, you know, absolutely seeing towards students, um, but also removing the barriers of, you know, transportation is an issue. Uh, they have to work, um, or they're taking care of the others, something, what can we do as a school to help them still be involved? Uh, maybe offering clubs during the day, you know, in our PCC time, using our, our ancient prime time, um, you know, when the students are here, not requiring a club to be outside of the school day. So trying to figure out different things to remove those barriers amongst, um, rest of us. Well, this is what, uh, this was the same thing in the fall, but some of the same things kept coming up on what gets in the way. Um, next slide, please. Uh, different activities that students are already involved in, and then the next slide lists, um, activities that you wish.
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah, so pickleball is often in the summer, you know, maybe we could offer it for the summer.
Put it in your locker.
Yeah.
Yeah. You just put it in the locker.
All right, so, but. Let's switch to the next slide. So this was our academic goal. Um, so by May of twenty twenty-five, all students will show at least ten percent increase in growth on the AIMS web plus career in both math and reading. And just gonna tell you right now, that goal was extremely lofty, um, but we, we tried. And, um, it was also, it's a little skewed on the data because we did not have AIMS web plus, um, in the fall ready to go for our youngest ones. Um, our oldest ones already kind of had it and were good to go, but our youngest ones didn't have it, and it was new to the younger. So that was a whole piece, um, added in there along with all the add twenty stuff that we had to do and things like that. So if you go to the next slide, um, and also going through all the data, you can look at many pieces. I looked at the composite score, you can look at cut scores and things like that. But I just broke it down. So I just put K one, they only had the winter and the spring data, um, in there. K two, so we had to break it down with reading and math. Um, we had games by minutes. So some of them were, like, they were in our lowest percent and they, by the end, were up into the sixties and seventies. Some had minimal, minimal growth. There were a few areas where some went backwards and it could be multiple factors. It could be the day that we did it, it could be, um, something else happened, but there was growth, even though some of the numbers, obviously we don't have a hundred percent students, um, all increasing by ten percent. But I went through and I looked through all of the different ones, and that was the other thing is I just look at the fall, I had to look at the spring, and then I had to like compare the two.
So what are the numbers? We don't have that particular slide here. Um, what, what, um, what does that, what do the numbers mean?
So there were thirty-one out of thirty-seven students that met that ten percent.
Yeah, okay, thanks, sorry. So that's okay. Okay. So what was like the overall piece that you wanted, what, ten?
We said a hundred.
A hundred.
That would be ten percent increase from the fall to the spring.
Oh.
In both. So it was a very low percentage. And guess what? We added a new CLA curriculum into that, and we added twenty into that. So again, looking back on it, it was, that was, um, a huge stretch, but I feel like looking through all the data, like there were some kids in two, some of our special ed students met the goal, you know, and so that I feel like right there is a huge success. There were some where they're, they stayed, um, equal, or some, you know, like might look slightly decreased, but it wasn't like glaring.
We were talking about progress monitoring earlier too, and I thought I love, like, actually dissect that and figure out our students that did not meet it because I was working on, you know, the progress report, there are one of the special education teachers that is not here, and the games were astronomical for a sub fourth grade student for progress monitoring. And this is just one snapshot.
Right. So my goal for next year will still be similar to this, but I'm going to give the data to the staff and say, okay, here was our student, these, these, you know, rose up here, these went down a little bit, or these kind of stayed, you know, from the fall to the spring, pretty close, um, in numbers. So like what can we do? And I feel like with our bookworms and our, we do, um, differentiated instruction, and so taking those students and we already, we've got that data, and then starting the year off with something before we even have to do more testing, so.
True. And then, you know, I mean, again, just, uh, someone looking at the data, like one might think something's going on in fourth grade. Oh, that both are the COVID kids.
They are, and they're also moving from primary.
To, to.
Yeah, where they're moving.
It'll be interesting when you get another year of data to be like, is fourth grade always a little, like, like that's just something about.
That is.
Or is it that's what happened, fifth grade will now have the issue that, like, it'll be interesting.
Julie, that is a long, that is a struggle with giving them to skip to something like the state when it was badger and then forward. Is, give us some longitudinal data where we can compare it.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so this is our goal for our social emotional goal, is that we would have a hundred percent students report that they have at least one adult and one peer that they feel a connection to, if you go to the next. So we were at ninety-eight percent. That's right. I, I feel like that is a huge success. And we have it figured out, um, down to the grade and those students. And, um, our student service team, it was towards the end of April, we did, uh, check and connect where we kind of picked some of those students out and we shared them with staff and said, hey, start to make connections with these kids, and not that those kids had any idea, but we're just saying good morning to them. How are you? Glad to see you, those kinds of things. And then we asked staff for their inputs, student service has their inputs, and then those students, we did not do it because it was right at the end of the year, but we will rotate those students, so it would be different ones. And then in other districts that have done this, even those kids that may not be on the list anymore, you still are saying good morning and you're, you're still having that connection with them. So doing that, and then also we might do a little bit more where, um, in homeroom, we're doing more things that are connecting our students to our students. You know, you're with those, those kids, going to all the different rooms, but then being able to make, um, more peer connections with them. And it also could have been the day that they filled out the survey, if they were having, you know, peer issues and those who could skew the data. But that's what we're gonna look at doing next year is to continue something like this, but then even adding a little bit more, um, into it.
Yeah, that was a very good, really good project. I mean, we're looking at a high percentage, ninety-eight percent, that, that's nice to see. But yet it still is kind of sad to see that there are actually, you know, young, youngsters out there that don't feel that they have any connection at all with them at all. I mean, that's, that's, that's horrible. And we don't want, I, I, I mean, we gotta do for a hundred percent.
Right.
And I, I appreciate this, but, but still, I mean, that's, that's tough, you know.
And how does adults, we might feel we have a connection with them, but.
Right.
Kids don't feel that. So that's, that's our job, is to work harder and find these other ways, because it may not be us doing more, it might just be tweaking what we're doing to meet the, that.
A different adult trying to make that connection.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you. Okay, well, we are on to item ten, which is discussion action item. Um, we will start with item, item A was removed from the agenda. We will start with item B, the budget revision. Um, and we have a handout.
And this is just what we took approved in the annual report to moving the money back, right? I mean, it's. So these were the budget revisions for twenty-four, twenty-five from the October budget, just the two entries for that.
From the, okay. These, this was related in year twenty twenty-four.
In the revalued budget.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, I would entertain a motion to approve these budget revisions.
I'm motion to approve the budget revisions for twenty-four, twenty-five as presented.
Is there a second?
I will second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the budget revision for the twenty-four, twenty-five year as presented. Any discussion? If not, let's vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion, carry. Uh, preliminary budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And this is what we just approved in the annual meeting, right? You approved the levy, now you need to approve the budget. Yeah. The budget that is really a shot in the dark right now.
Right.
Very preliminary. But it is the budget you just went through that you spent all of.
Yeah, so we need it approved so we can pay the roll in July.
So I would entertain a motion to approve that preliminary budget as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the preliminary budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year as presented. Any other questions or discussion? Then all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion, carry. Item D, out of state trip approval for Olivia Moore to attend the national competition for educators rising. I'll make a motion to approve the attendance at the national competition for educator rising in, uh, Georgia, Florida, June twenty-sixth through the thirtieth.
And I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the out of state trip as indicated. Uh, any discussion? Question?
Do we need to mention neighbor now?
Oh, Olivia Moore.
Yeah.
Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion, carry.
And I would just like to congratulate her.
Yes.
Very.
Good job.
Very cool. Okay. Item E, updated to the twenty-five, twenty-six childcare handbook. I think we have a few questions about that.
Yeah, one, one that I would ask for approval is an amendment being made to change the twenty-two days to fifteen days upon the approval for the.
Yeah.
Available days for.
That is on page eight, correct?
Yeah, that did not get updated in the actual handbook here, but that, you would ask that, that change be made prior to approval.
I don't know what you're talking about.
So it currently lists, um, which page is it? I don't have it.
I think it's page eight.
Page eight with, it, I don't know, is it somewhere? Yeah, the twenty, the vacation day language is, it's.
Six seven? Well, there's, there's two different things in here. There's, and I, my question is, so the center will be closed for the following paid holidays, but do you, do the, do the people who are enrolled still have to pay us for those days that were closed? Because you're paying the weekly fee, and so when a day is closed, are they still paying your weekly fee even though it's Good Friday or?
So this was something that we, going back and forth.
Yeah.
When using the ten vacation days, these used to be on tape, so parents wouldn't pay them. And then when we went back and forth whether or not we were going to have a parent still get vacation days that they could use and not have them these days, then we kept them in there.
So, so. So the way I'm reading it, they would pay for these days even though we're closed unless they use their ten days. So my suggestion, which, that's kind of how I read it, but then I was a little confused. I don't think we can close some of these days. I mean, if we're gonna ask parents to pay, then I think we need to be open except July fourth. And I think we need to be open, winter break except, I mean, not Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, New Year's Eve, or New Year's Day. And I think we need to be open Good Friday, and I think we need to be open spring break. Because we can't charge them. I mean, we can be closed like, like real holidays when they're gonna be off work anyways because they're off, but I think we have to be open the rest of the day. I, I hear where you're coming from, and I had really tended to think, but like, although the center may be closed on spring break, there are other parents that are having to go to work during school break, break. So I'm, I was a bit confused about this, of, of.
Kevin, how long is the spending place?
Well, it used to be on tape, so it switched to basically the tape.
Right, how long?
So it's been open. So we switched, the Christmas break we added in there, and then the July one we did because July was when clean and waxing was getting done in our classroom. Um, because otherwise, if we're open all the time, they were never able to come in. So that was when we opened the July one. The winter one, it was because we would be open and we would have a head really, really low enrollment. So it wasn't, it wasn't, like, we could have one teacher there for four kids.
If you're giving them an off screen, I didn't actually see what he, what he would have anybody. Something to pay for it, it's not like they. So when, if you were closed.
So that, that was why, like, with the vacation days, so when we redid our rate and how it was budgeted, we said that that was only gonna be closed for those two weeks. So that's why then this got changed to them being either paid or we take away.
That's the question I wanted to clarify now, when I asked that, you said from the, when did the change take place to change it to those being?
Paid.
Paid.
Well, like when you're going through it, because when we went through the budget at the last meeting and we talked about how we were only gonna be closed, it was like budgeted for whatever, fifty.
Fifteen days.
Fifty weeks or whatever it was, and started at fifty-two weeks. So then these could no longer be counted against.
Right.
Seven months.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So that's when it got changed.
So it has, when approved to change with being implemented, we're speaking in terms of.
Yes, it has been changed, right.
That, that was where I was confused.
Right. Well, these are the days that are typically used to the center being closed.
Yeah.
It's just they also don't pay, and I don't feel comfortable charging someone for time that we're choosing to close.
Yeah.
I mean, oh, granted, Christmas, we're gonna be closed on Christmas, that's like, of course. But the other days that we're choosing that just kind of match up with school, I don't think we can charge. I think we have to decide which way we're doing. I don't think we can close and charge them. If we're gonna close, then we need to budget, then we're not getting that revenue. Because I don't feel comfortable charging them for time that we're saying we need to buy, right? Unless it's Christmas, that's okay, like that's.
Christmas, Memorial Day, Fourth of July.
Right, because you're giving four days of care.
Right.
You're still paying your fees.
So the pastor would be.
Also, like, a lot of issue with, like, having these built-in days off is because we've always been short staffed. So you can go and look and see how many sick days or vacation hours. So you can go and look and see how many sick days or vacation hours that certain staff members have because we don't have the option to take off. So when we started to build these in, it was like we built it in because it allowed my staff to, we didn't have to worry about people having to take that off. So it was already scheduled for them. So like, that was one of the things why we were initially in there and why they were unpaid. Because we weren't open for them to be utilized. Um, so I guess, you know, like you said, it goes into what we're going to charge. Are we going to give parents vacation time or are we gonna just?
What were the people being paid? Like when you're closed, are the staffs still being paid?
Yeah, they're using vacation.
They were either using, yeah, or they were.
This is a lot, this is a lot PTO and not probably any other PTO.
Right.
Way more than I would.
Well, and or they had an option to go in, in work in the classroom without the kids. So whether these rotating materials, uh, lesson planning, because when they're short staffed, you don't get time. Now across, you're with kids all the time. Like that, they have the option to either use their time off if it wasn't something they got paid for. Like on Christmas, on those days that we actually get paid for. Or they could use, you know, like work, whether you get paid time off.
I, is, is there redundancy in here because we have, okay, let me see. But I, you know, again, spring break or winter break. I'm thinking back to when I had took some daycare, just because the school was on spring break. I still had to work. I mean, I wasn't using the childcare center that was affiliated with the school. But still, if.
You know, PTO is, is, is available if they need to take, you know, their time off. Do you want to take spring break? Pay the spring break. Okay. You know, that's gotta be spoken for early on if you ask them however the vacation dates are taken. Um, I think you're saying what you're saying as some, well, that I'm sick when you're sort of staffed. Is that correct? Well, maybe that needs to be discussed. You know, I mean, hey, I mean, we're gonna, we can't be abusing this stuff. I mean.
Yeah, we have parameters in place that if someone misses a certain number of expected days that we can ask for.
We need a minimum staffing on, on these days.
Here you go. That's the process with teaching staff, obviously within the building, that's how we facilitate it is, is that we can limit days off if we already have a couple of staff out and stuff. And I mean, um, so Jim, I, I, I'm going to be honest with you is that this is beyond the bandwidth of my brain right now to try to process like all the looping pieces to this. So I would ask Pam this. Pam, the budget number that was built, was built on the premise that how many days would be available?
Fifteen days.
Total fifteen, total days.
Yes.
Okay.
Do we have to approve this handbook tonight?
Yeah. Yeah, because I mean, if truly can't be closed, then make them pay for this.
No, I'm not comfortable with that at all. We might have to go back to the drawing board on what we actually need in the budget. If this is how we have to run it. I mean, it's one thing to say you have to pay for this summer because we're holding your spot. It's another thing to tell a family they have to pay for three weeks because we chose to close.
Right.
Like, I'm just not, like, I, I can't do that.
Yeah.
It's fair, it's fair.
Well, right, right. I mean, that's just not okay. So I, and I hear what Abby says. Like, I think we have to just pause and think about all the ramifications with it and, and think through that.
Well, I mean, frankly, I, I agree with you and that's what I'm kind of, and you know me, I'm pro teachers. But our schedule is kind of set up to cater to the children of, and the persons who don't have the school schedule. It, it's a struggle to jump. So I, I agree with you.
So can we?
That's why this is complicated.
Is there any reason we can't come back to the July meeting? And we probably need to then have a meeting between now and July of the summer. Maybe to just regroup around this concept.
I need to, I need to see some scenarios, like.
Because the only thing you're really asking is for these to be paid. Everything else we implement. We implemented the race and we implemented the.
The summer. Correct. Well, the, the only thing that if we don't, if we don't change it, it's going to say we're going to close.
For the fourth.
For the, for the prior week of the Fourth of July and we'll pay, we'll pay the staff, but we won't charge it.
But that'll happen prior to our next.
Right. So right now, the week of the Fourth of July, you were already closed. I mean, you're closed. Parents expect you to be closed. They just expect to not have to pay.
Yeah. So if we pass this now, then when someone.
So I think that.
I think we better have that week for cleaning.
Right. We have to have.
That is legit.
Well, I mean. Yeah. In the way our current practices, you know, it's other childcare centers will come in on a weekend and clean. I mean, so we have to address all of those things in what we're going to put in place.
The floor waxing, yes. That's one thing. Multiple stations in the hallway.
Okay.
So if we proceeded with what you just laid out, effectively it would mean they would be not paying for that week. Yet, because that's what is approved in the prior handbook until this is approved.
Yeah, well, if we don't change anything, they'll just continue on where we live.
For the Fourth of July, we can tell we would make those changes.
Right. And then the next day.
Pretty, pretty likely. Yeah.
Well, and especially when I tell them they can't bring their kids. I mean, I, I'm not comfortable with that. I think we have to figure out, yes, we're going to release that revenue of the week, but.
This is like all the stuff we have to figure out. Cause like, I don't think a normal daycare closes a week so they can access the floor.
Don't, don't. They come in on Saturday. They come in on Saturday.
Yeah.
Or they do it after six thirty at night. I mean, I, I agree. These are all the things we have to think through and.
Yes. I, I would entertain a motion to, um.
Table this.
To table this and bring it back.
I don't think we have a motion July.
Just a hard action on the table.
Okay.
Mary Ann, I have a favor for the next one. Before we address the athletic handbook, can we address the first reading of the new policy of three seventy-seven point three? And potentially consider adopting it at first reading, otherwise I'm not sure that we can adopt the handbook. Cause we're adopting a policy, we don't have.
Not the dual sport participation.
Yeah, technically that's, that's correct.
But I am comfortable with, I mean, I'm comfortable with addressing it tonight and then adopting it without a second reading so that we don't have to hold off on the athletic handbook.
Um, okay. Now we're getting into technicalities. That's a change in the agenda, changing the order of the agenda. And I don't know what is more, uh, serious now, approving a handbook that references a policy that hasn't been adopted or.
It doesn't just reference the policy, it actually links it out.
So hypothetically speaking, could the approval be based upon the subsequent approval?
Absolutely.
In waiting of the first reading of policy three seventy-seven?
That would be a good way to do it. That would be the way to do it.
I, I think it is. And I, I mean, to give, to give a little context, the reason this is coming now is Mark and I thought like this is, this is going to start coming up. And this has been something the WA has allowed, but we didn't have a policy. So we felt it would be appropriate to put something on the books here. So why the timing is now? Um, because we're starting to have some families reach out about the potential of doing, doing this in, in a district our size. You know, something.
Okay. Well, and the dual, well, the dual sport participation is the only one that relates to a district policy. The NIL is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Different, different.
Okay. So in terms of the athletic handbook, I understand from going through this, that is the only change. Is that correct?
The NIL is a.
And the dual sport is the only change. Okay. So, um.
No. What, oh, you're talking about the language?
Yeah.
So Mark, could you, did, why don't you ask, actually ask Mark if we're, are we under discussion for this, the handbook?
We're, I'm in discussion. Well, I think it's appropriate to talk about the dual sport participation because it's in the handbook and that's what we're approving. So while we're not going to approve the policy until we get there, I think it's completely appropriate for us to feel comfortable with the policy in order to approve the handbook. Okay? And then the policy is just a formality afterward. Okay. Questions?
Rick? I have a question, Mark. Six days.
Yeah.
If one coach does not agree to the contract, the student will not be allowed to participate. So basically the coach says no, the student can't do it even if the student wants to.
Yeah.
Can I play devil's advocate? So I'm not an athlete. Coach Winters, I want to do both sports. Coach Winters, no. All right, we'll see you later. I'm doing the other sport. Like there's natural consequences if a coach isn't willing to be flexible with that.
Not allowing the student to do what the student wants to do.
Okay. Five. Okay. Right? Five. Who's, like, who's the adult in the room? Kinda, you know, I, I'm getting really touched.
She just wanted to be in such.
Okay. But you know, if the student wants to do another sport, there's a nullification in terms of practices, in terms of, um, you know, in terms of competition.
Yeah, you gotta, you gotta declare a primary sport.
Right.
And it's laid out the respecification. I get the scenario Rick's talking about. Um, but I feel like that is that natural, like if a coach is inflexible, you might make the kid pick and they may not pick the, your sport.
Yeah.
I don't know. And I'd like to think our coaches, like, that's the oversight piece with our athletic director, right? Of guiding the adults through this process.
I mean, I think that's the only question that I had is if a coach wasn't being reasonable. It doesn't give an athletic director kind of veto power here. I mean, so I think, you know, so, but I would guess that there's probably other policies and not just about this, if a coach is being unreasonable, that it could be taken to the athletic director to consider that it doesn't have to necessarily be spelled out here. Cause anything if a coach was being unreasonable, the student and her family should come and ask the athletic director.
Mark, can you talk about the thoughts, because, so this is a kind of a French, kind of sample policies here. The board could make a request, like to remove that line from the policy. If that's a concern, if we're talking about, why, why you think that, given policies?
It's a, like, if, if I were to survey the head coaches right now of all the sports, I could tell you exactly which coaches are all in favor of this and all, and the coaches in our, and I'll tell you how it's going to go. The coaches of the North Pole individual sport, dual sport, let's go.
Yeah.
And the coaches of the team sport, they don't like it or something else, you know? Because, you know, this is the example, you know, like, let's say you've got a really fast baseball player. Well, they can want to be really fast to track, but probably minimal training. I mean, it helps stuff to be on, but like you're fast, you're fast, right? You, you don't see, um, coaches of team sports trying to go grab, like, baseball's not going to go grab a track.
You can't steal first base.
Yeah, you know, you know, so I think that, um, you know, it's a. By putting it in there, I think we're hoping to give those coaches at least maybe a little bit of say as to how this goes. Um, I think that, um, if you just say any kid at once, you can be a dual sport athlete with no input from the coaches. Um, I think there's, um, the sense of abuse in that scenario as well.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. One, one of my daughters was a dual sport athlete, both in, in the spring, both in the fall and in the spring. So she was volleyball and cross country. And so after volleyball practice, she ran hills, Casey did individual workouts for her and all that kind of stuff. But if there was a cross country meet on the same day as the volleyball meet, she went to volleyball. Because that was her team sport. That was her primary.
That's pretty standard.
Yeah. So that, yeah. She didn't miss, she missed some cross country practices, but she did stuff on her own and she didn't miss any volleyball practices or games.
Mary Ann, there were times she went and ran and then made it to the volleyball game.
There probably were. Yes.
Mark, do you anticipate like a floodgate opening here of, of our students, like in our particular district?
I don't. Um, I think there are certain few examples where I could see that this could be advantageous for some of our student athletes. Um, I think the thing that I would really get this past that I really stress for our coaches is this, this is not, and not open recruiting. Um, we are not, as coaches, going to go and suggest to someone else, hey, you know, we have dual sport now, you should help them write. That's, that's, that's not what a coach should be doing.
And I would admit that I, as the girls basketball coach, I see you don't, I don't have a horse in this race because there is an obstacle. I should drive a better, so what I'm saying that it, it really doesn't impact.
Well, because I agree. If it's something that a student only has a passion and wants to like. I'm in volleyball, but I love to run and so I want to do some cross country. But, I mean, I also look at this and go, my gosh, how much are we putting on our kids? Like, you know, this is like, I mean, I, so I would agree that I wouldn't want to be, it becoming recruitment to put the pressure on kids, but an opportunity for kids to look the right fit, right? So I completely agree with you.
And here would be my two cents on recruitment. If you don't think there's recruitment going on right now, you like trying to get kids, without the dual sport thing, to try to get kids to go for one sport turns out very tapping in on the daily game. It's like, you know.
But that's a door slot. Like, that's what makes it just bad.
Yeah. So what I'm saying, it's not really happening.
Yeah. And a year ago.
But they can do both. I kind of feel like maybe you're meeting in the middle of.
Maybe you stop some of their recruitment.
I don't know.
I think, you know, like where I would see this being advantageous, for example, um, you know, I don't know that it would be feasible to have an athlete participate for a full season. It probably even hits, you'd imagine you could even possibly get fifty percent of the activities in your secondary sport. Probably like, you'd like, you're taking a quarter of it. Where I think it could be advantageous is, you know, I think, you know, and I'm not like making suggestions of who should do this, but like, you know, like last year, our girls cross country team was short a runner. Had they had a fifth runner, they probably would have finished pretty high in the conference and, you know, maybe a six. You could probably, um, again, not have to miss commit any volleyball games in order to run the conference. Or the conference cross country meet.
You probably wouldn't have to miss any volleyball game.
Right. Cause you, this policy says you only have to attend one cross country meet in order to go running.
Right.
And they could easily do that. They could find a date where there's not a contest.
Right.
Yeah.
Right. You know, and with a small school, you know, I, I think there's advantages to giving kids the option for that. And, okay, my historical piece, again, I'm old, class of seventy-two, but it was common that then, that.
But the problem back then, there were nine baseball games then. Now there's been twenty dead picks.
That could be, yeah. It was real common in the spring though. Guys who would go baseball in class. And there wasn't.
Uh, I mean, you could go, you could see there's a lot of discussion about this too. And you could say that I bet my chances too, there wasn't quite maybe the pressure on coaches.
Yeah.
You know, you have volleyball. There's all kinds of things where they feel like, you know, I need, I need to do well and I need my athletes to practice and all this kind of thing. So, um.
Yeah. What would you think?
We're seeing, I, I want to put this two cents in. We are seeing some of our, and it's not offensive thing, it's a nationalizing, we're seeing numbers dwindling in extracurricular activities and sports, right? I just feel like i- if this would check one of the boxes to maybe allow some of our teams to continue to compete. I, I just, it wants to get, it comes down to the athlete, right? Like if this, I would, I would leave it up to the family and the athlete to determine if this is too much for them. Because it's got to be initiated by them in the first place. And I don't want to stand in the way of kids. If a family and a student feel they can do this or want to do this, we want to have that available to them. And if it benefits our multiple programs, I'm all for that. Cause I want to see all of our programs continue to flourish.
I was just looking at earlier, the showing up there and in six years, we're down to a hundred and forty-two students in baseball. Six years. That's not very far away. A hundred and forty-two students and we still want to add as many sports as we have. Um, currently, that won't happen.
I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five. I'll make a motion to approve the twenty twenty-five, twenty-six 학년 handbook.
I'll second it.
Well, it's coming.
Yeah. I, the only thing I don't like is six A. I, I don't like that.
By the way, speaking of that, so when I, when I said this to you, I don't know if you have, but I, I put something in red at the end of number seven. Is that, is that still in red? Like, that should take pause. There's something where it says pause? I'm not sure we need this.
No.
On seven or six A?
Seven.
Seven. Completely determined, second time.
I think when I sent this to you, Jason, that I, I put it in red and red, I'm not sure at this point is necessary, pause.
Yeah, and I brought it to Jason.
Yeah. So I wanted to leave it up to her.
I don't think it's necessary.
The board can, we, we can remove any of these components.
I don't know.
And the way I look at that is, like, right now, like, if a student athlete, two weeks into his board, he says, this isn't for me, and then he decides to go with the other sport, we wouldn't prevent that, right?
I would do that.
So, like, that's kind of what's happening here, I think. Like, why do we need that? I'm not sure that we need one, seven.
You know, I would hope no one would want to prevent that.
Yeah. Yeah, if we decide to terminate.
Okay. So I'm approving the handbook. We're not going to seven yet, because seven's later on in the agenda.
Yeah.
We're approving the handbook. And then we can make that adjustment to three, more agenda items. We're not, we're not this midnight. It's because I don't want to be here.
Wow.
Mark, Mark grew a beard here, winning.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve the athletic handbook. Is that correct?
Correct.
Do we have a second to that motion?
I second it.
And Chris, a second with it. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our SRO.
Any changes, so last year?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve the SRO. Okay.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded. Here's the MOU between the school district and the city of Pittsville for the SRO for the coming school year. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Medical advisory agreement. Same agreement with Dr. Palmer, right?
No changes from last year?
No changes. It's just updated the dates and...
I'll make the motion to approve the medical advisory agreement for twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the medical advisory agreement for the coming school year. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, appoint school board representative for the twenty-five, twenty-six year. We have, uh, the recommendation is to appoint Emma Bartlett and Ellie Rayburn as the student representatives to the school board.
Make a motion to appoint Emma Bartlett and Ellie Rayburn as the student representatives to the school board for the two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six school year.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to appoint the student school board representative for the coming school year. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have the AGR report for the second semester. Because if there's a few of them, speaking of, this is just kind of going over the same, um, reading slides, tier one, tier two, you keep going. So reading form is broken down, and you'll see that, like, from the beginning of the school year to the end, pretty much we met a hundred percent, if not upper ninety, in all the categories. So that was amazing. So that's where I said our focus needs to kind of drill down where our goals go. So that would be kindergarten. Again, first grade, um, here, eighty percent, but it's a hundred and twenty words that they're going, but, um, there was some drop, but it's also, the word list keeps increasing. So it was only thirty-two words at the beginning, and at the end here, there's a hundred and fifty words, but the goal is to be a hundred and twenty. Um, and Level J is just using the first, uh, is Level J, sorry, for second grade. Did that say? Go to the next one. Okay. At first I thought that was then Level J two, and I thought, oh, I copied the wrong one, but, um, sorry. Um, so here again, I mean, we're, we've increased every time that we did some more testing, so, and then we're grading. Again, we've, um, increased all the way up. So that's reading, and then the next one is math. It's kind of basically the same thing. So you're seeing, you know, all those things keep increasing as we move up, and some are getting close to, um, having everything mastered. But if you're learning, I'm looking at those kids' numbers. This is where, like I said, when we drill down more specific rather than being broad, we can see the growth that does happen in our daily classroom. So, go on, first second. Double-digit, got that detection, ninety-seven percent, there we go. And then third grade, um, fraction assessment.
So math seems to be very, very strong.
And this is the second year in the program, so that is helpful.
Yeah.
The Bridges Math.
It seems like the, and I would guess that first grade maybe gets the same five students that are probably struggling in both categories.
And we had some move in and out, so that's why some of the numbers changed to, and I kind of challenged the teachers to align the AGR goals with X twenty. Some of that was possible, and so I had submitted those already, what we were going to do, um, but some of them, it's not, they're not compatible because some of them are timed, and we don't want to put timing on the AGR, and so they weren't able to align all of them, but we tried to cut down, so we're not testing and testing and doing more testing with our kids. But we still have to do some, but we've tried to align, um, some of them. Any questions?
We were in year three in my former district, the Bridges Math, and saw a similar growth in moving into year three. So I was very excited, like, in here, you know, this was adopted that prior to, didn't know that we were using wrenches.
Very strong, yeah. Yeah, very, very good. Um, I would entertain a motion to, um, approve the AGR report for second semester.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the AGR report for second semester. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. Second reading of that policy and rule, the reading four five point four one, the promotion and retention rule. Um, just, uh, remember, this is the WASB adjusted. I think there's still a lot of moving parts of this. I can see where maybe down the road it might be adjusted, but for right now, I think all school districts have to have this approved by the end of June here.
Yes.
So, so this is the best thing we can go with. So I would entertain a motion to approve the second reading.
I'll make the motion to approve the second reading of policy thirty-four five point four one in rule thirty-four five point four.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Go ahead.
I'll second the motion to approve the reading.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the policy and rule for third to fourth grade promotion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we are back to the first reading of the dual court participation policy.
I think we are going to...
We have a little more discussion.
Yeah, we're going to recommend removing seven, and then there was only a question about six A and, you know...
So is the board comfortable? Because I certainly have no issues with removing seven. I left it in there. I told them to leave it in because I wanted the board to be able to, I didn't want them to go, like, I was, individually, I was pulling stuff off prior to coming to the board for approval, so...
And I don't have a problem with six A. I think the coach, the coach should, should absolutely have stayed. I just think that, that if, for some reason, someone was unfair in what they were doing for a student, that I would just want them to be able to go to the athletic director to do some mediation, to kind of have a conversation. But I, I'm thinking there's another policy that, that might override that on everything if there's something that someone would...
Yeah.
Have an issue with that. There could just be another set of eyes to have a conversation.
I don't think it would hurt to have that because, you know, kind of, Mark, a route into, you'd hate to think that someone may be overly selfish with their program versus something that could affect another program, but I'm not even sure it would happen where, say, a coach...
And more importantly, it's benefiting the student, right?
Right.
So, like, it's not about a program versus another program. It's about what's best for the student.
I would hope all of our coaches would have that in mind, but I can see, Mary, we're giving that one, so importantly, and what...
Is number ten...
I'd say number ten.
Yeah.
And that might be a tad harder.
Oh, perfect. Yeah.
Good catch.
When you're the judicial...
And I was going to indicate there's an appeals process for anything related to it goes through, you know, the principal district administrator or eventually the school board. But, yeah, ten, ten covers, I think, the concerns, right?
Right. I would just want, I would want an athlete and or their parents to feel like, God, it's totally no, it's totally okay for me to go talk to the athletic director or the building principal and, and have this conversation about, like, what should be talking through.
That's reasonable.
And I think based on the relationships and the culture in our school, in our, in our high school and middle school, that they would feel comfortable talking to those people.
So we move with seven and then they're okay with six because of ten? Is that all right?
I'm not okay with six, but...
You don't have to love it, but do you like it?
I don't love it. I don't like it.
Okay.
Well, I'd like to actually make a motion to move on policy thirty-seven to seven point three with the removal of seven.
Let's give a second.
Because we don't have to do a second reading, right?
Right.
No, you can leave it.
Yeah, we can wait, second reading.
Can we, can we change the word in six A from, one quick word change?
Okay.
From will not be allowed to may not be allowed. Because they, at least then they know they have the option to appeal. This is, they're not going to be allowed. I want whoever, you know, if a coach says, no, you're not going to do that, I want the student to know, well, we do have options besides number ten. You can't appeal the...
I don't think that fundamentally changes the meaning behind, like, if that, you know, I do still feel like ten overrides the language, anything in there, but if that would be, I don't think changing it to may would fundamentally change the language, and if I do get ripped to...
You can't do that, Cam. You can't.
Yeah, I, yeah. I'm with you, Jason. Yeah. You know, this is one of these...
Mark's okay with it too, as they, you know, they would defer to him.
Okay. Okay. I, I, I mean, I kind of wonder why it's there if it only says may, because then that's just, like, feeding, uh, ambiguity. Well, it is. Like, then it's like, oh, well, maybe what you, like...
They can choose.
Right. Versus, the coach says this, this is the answer, but I want to go talk to the athletic director, the building principal, for them, I mean, in a sense, they're overturning it if they do that, which they have the right to do it on number ten, but may kind of feels like we're taking a vote. And I'm not sure that that would be a healthy relationship, that it kind of feels like it's a vote. I mean, we are creating a situation with ten that if a student and family feels that there, it's not a fair decision, you are asking for someone to actually come in, review this, and potentially to overturn it, which, I mean, that's the way we have the system that, using the word may makes me feel like we're getting a whole bunch of people in a room and we're, we're taking a vote, and that feels a little, like, that could be a little...
Yeah. I don't know how to explain that, because if you were just going to go to the coach and say, no one else ever knows this, that would give me some pause. The entire process starts with them getting informed from Mark. So Mark's going to want someone that's in your game. So if they don't get it, that's when, you know, you know, we have someone that's aware of it that can step in on the, on the student's behalf. They, you don't, you don't even need the student to go and see what's going on, because, you know, the activity director's already going to be aware of it. They're interested, because it's initiated by the student, not by the coach. I mean, you know, the coach might put an idea in the head, but the student has to do the work of going and getting it.
Yeah.
I've just seen coaches in, in the past years threaten kids with consequences of, of making a choice like that. I want to do as much as I can to eliminate such a threat. Uh, I know it's happened to kids in the past where they were told, if you do this, I'm not nominated for all conference, too bad for you. And I don't like seeing kids put in that spot.
You know, I, I think we're trying to read too much into this, you know? I, I mean, if, if we're trying to get away from that, then I would actually suggest just changing the process, that if a coach has a problem with it, then he goes and talks it over with the building principal and athletic director, and the decision gets made collectively, because then you're not, but this may, I mean, it feels like they have a say, but they don't really have a say. Like, that feels key, like, if I were a coach, that would feel key. So if we want to change it, I'd recommend that if a coach disagrees with the decision, then a collective decision is made between the coaches, the athletic director, and the building principal, and that's just written right in, so then everyone's talking about it, and then a final decision gets made. And I'm not saying that it has to go that direction. I just think somewhere may, what is we all, okay, like, why don't we try this policy for this year, the way, the way it's written? And, I mean, I, I can see where this could be a touchy subject, and, you know, if you got a coach that says, well, I'm not nominated for all conference, well, you know, that's just, is a, is a prerogative. It's kind of mean and nasty, but we can't control everybody's behavior.
I do want, we, we can coach a coach. I want these things to be doing.
Right, right. We can't coach a coach.
I don't want to speak for Mark or Taylor, but I have a feeling if that were to get back to Mark or Taylor, that I think there would probably be some reckoning with the coach making a comment like that to a coach. That's the enforcement side from our... I was going to throw this out as a suggestion, and maybe it's the same as the other one, is just adding a sentence. I was going to say, this decision may be appealed to the athletic director and building principal.
Again, that's number ten.
Right, but I'm saying add that, right behind number six A, just add that sentence. I know it infers that at the end, but to actually say, then parents know they have the right to appeal that decision if it happens, I, I don't, that would be just, that's a more direct way of explaining to people, if, if this happens, you do have a right to appeal. I don't know.
That's what I want. I want them to know.
Every single one is going to be appealed because you're asking to do it and you just got told no. And so, again, I'm wondering if that are intensive, it, do you just have the collective conversation upfront between the coach, the building principal, and the athletic director so that you're not creating an adversarial issue? I mean, again, if someone, if someone's asking for it and they say no, every single one of them is going to appeal.
Well, this is all that process would do, is it would make people lay out, it would prevent the potential for, they're going to like...
You're correct.
Well, so you know that family who would allow it.
The coach knows he needs to have a really good reason.
You got to make the case, because I know, like, if I know I've got a parent sponsor, I can just be like, yes, no. If I know that, hey, this is going to go to Mark or Taylor, and I think people know Mark and Taylor, they're going to make sure they cross the teeth and dot their i's going through this, and that there's no stinky business going on, right? Uh, because you got to make your case.
Yeah.
For saying no, why are you saying no?
This, this sets up just a whole bunch of interesting dynamics, and, yeah. I, I think we try.
I would have the motion over on the table to approve it with the removal of seven.
I'll wait first reading.
Same, and wait first reading.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the policy with the removal of item number seven. Um, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
I oppose also.
So we're three and two, so the motion carries. Let's see how it goes.
I think if we adjust it, adjust it like we just talked about, for, for the process on the.
Well, yeah, so this year the motion carries. So, um, and I don't, yeah, we'll see how it works. It would be very interesting to hear back from the board after the fall season.
I would say that, I will say that, we are not on the leading edge here in terms of dual court policy.
Yeah.
We're not dependent this year. My mind is going to fail fast.
Apparently FYI is allowing it, and they're giving some very new parameters for kids to be able to compete at conference and state and, and a few things, I mean, that's the whole intention of this. Not that you're going to actually compete all year, it's that you're going to be available for competition. Um, and we didn't make those rules, those were made far beyond.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, item number eleven, legislative update, just FYI, joint finance is meeting on Thursday, and on the agenda are all the education pieces, it's going to be broadcast live. Um, it's downstairs, starting at one o'clock.
I shared an article related to this with the school board from the School Administrators Alliance, it came out about the meeting, um, and one of the proposals, uh, for funding the special education piece with the high cost, which would have a very minimal negligible impact for the, for us. So anyway, so if you have time to read that article that I forwarded you about the details of why the high cost funding would not benefit, apparently I'm shaking her head, it would be very.
Jamie and I went through a lot of work to run our numbers and.
Over thirty thousand dollars, that would only.
Even though we have some over the thirty thousand, we're getting nothing back for high cost, and so.
So.
Um, personally, I would still like to see the lower revenue ceiling.
For, for sure.
Yeah, but I don't, that, I don't, you're, we're not going to get full, we're not going to get special ed and low revenue ceiling. I just, I could be wrong, but I, I think it's highly unlikely, and joint financial members have said that.
Yeah. I would just say, this is my only comment, and I want my comment here, is that I, I agree with you hornily, and I think I told you, I answered when I asked by legislators, which one would you prefer? I would take the per pupil, the lower revenue, along with more of the general, the equalized aid, like those two pieces. But I would hate to see this happen, is that lower revenue limit not more of the high, as they had talked, to twelve, six, fifty, by saying, well, we're going to put some money in special education, and it being this, if that makes sense what I'm saying? Because this isn't going to help us at all, the, the high cost.
Right.
So if they stay twelve, six, fifty with the low, if that plays through, absolutely, I'm okay with that. I'd hate to see the negotiation be a, well, we're going to lower that number to twelve, two, fifty, but we're going to put some money in special education, but it's high cost. That would be like saying, I'm going to give you nothing, and you're going to get less. Uh, and that's why I only figured, I don't want that to happen, and I just want to be very clear, that high cost will not help us. And about seventy percent of the school districts in the state will see nothing from that. So, that's it, I'm off the short box.
Okay, so, you're free, tune in, one, one o'clock on Thursday. Um, item number twelve, public comments per school board policy one eighty-seven, doesn't look like there's anybody here that wants to talk anymore.
Yeah. We weren't about, we've been waiting.
It's only five hours, yeah, I mean, I don't want to talk anymore. Um, okay, so number thirteen, future agenda items, um, do I have to read through this for the people? Okay, good. Um, can we add, um, to the handbook in July, so that it's approved before August?
Yes.
I think we can.
Devin, Jenny, you got that.
Thank you.
Good guess, Leslie, yes.
Thanks, good guess. And do we also have an employee handbook we need to do? I doubt it'll be ready in July.
Because we don't need, well, the difference would be.
August, we don't need it till August.
Tell you in August.
Okay, but it is a future agenda item, okay.
That could be August.
Okay, sounds good. Uh, next, the board will consider moving into closed session per what's sent to statute, nineteen point eight-five, grand one, grand D, grand F.
I'll make a motion with closed session.
Second.
I am requesting the two building principals stay for this to answer any questions.
Do you know what, can you change a little call vote?
Yes.
Danny, I have to say, you have a sense. Michael, I signaled you about twenty minutes ago, and I do a nap, go ahead and leak. What are you, a nap? I was observing, and you know. Michael, we don't get time back there.